Good morning, everybody. I would like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order. Welcome to everyone for being here in the first meeting of 2019. I hope everybody had a festive and hopefully relaxing holiday season and geared up and ready to go for 2019. I would remind you to please cut off your cellphones or put them on silent and that the board meeting is being live streamed. I normally make a joke about, you know, the dozens and dozens of Mississippians who watch this, but I'm told that my mother-in-law will be watching this morning, so no jokes until February. But I would also like to recognize we have a special guest, Representative Bill Kincaid from DeSoto County, representing District 52. Thank you for being here, sir. I've asked Ms. Wright to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Bailey to do the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I wouldn't please. Dear heaven and Father, we just thank you so much for the opportunity today. Lord, help us to find joy in it. Thank you so much for your grace and your mercy that you distribute so freely to us undeservedly. Lord, we thank you for this country that we live in. Lord, we thank you for the servicemen and women who fight diligently for our freedom. Our freedom is never free. Help us never to take that for granted. But we ask you to be with their families as they serve our country in a different way, as they support our service people. Lord, again, we come to you and ask you to lead, guide, and direct this meeting for the children of Mississippi. We ask you to be with the leadership here today, the decisions that are made here today, and may they ever honor you in serving your children. Again, we ask you for safety for all our staff members and children, administrators, and teachers throughout this state, or be with the community's leaders, place a hedge of protection around them. In all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Sure. Okey-dokey. Need approval of the minutes of our December 20th board meeting? Motion and second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We will now move to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? If so, I'll entertain a motion to do so now. Added as number six before the consent? Consent will become seven. Okay, so there's a motion to have a discussion on the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull out for discussion? Do we need to vote on the... Okay, so I'm going to advise that we need to vote on the motion on the full agenda first. So there's a motion to discuss Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. Any more specificity around the motion? I was asking if there's any more specific guidance that we can give staff to be prepared to discuss. Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
It's second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members would like to pull out for discussion? If so, I'll entertain a motion to do so now. Excuse me, I want to see. Third? Now, seven C. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Seven C. Hello, Mr. McLemone. Approval of methodology toward grants to school districts, public institutions of higher learning, community colleges, state agencies to participate in the Mississippi Department of Education Educators in Residence Program. The motion is to move that off of consent into the full agenda? Okay. So there are consent item? Okay. Nothing on the consent. We've already passed the one addition to the agenda for the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. So do we have to vote again? All right, so now we have the full agenda. I'm told we have to vote again. So there's a motion to adopt the full agenda with the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf now as six, and consent agenda A, B, C as seven, A, B, C. Motion to adopt that agenda. So a second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Can you pose? Motion carries. All right, so with that, we'll move into our recognition ceremony.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Our Dean, Dr. Wright, and board members. It is now my honor to present to you the board recognitions for the month of January. Today, we honor three schools that earned national recognition for academic achievement. They were recently designated as National Blue Ribbon Schools by the U.S. Department of Education. The recognition is based on a school's overall academic performance or progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, schools demonstrating that all students can achieve at high levels. The coveted National Blue Ribbon Schools Award affirms the hard work of educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging and engaging content. The 2018 honorees were recognized at an award ceremony in November in Washington, D.C. We have the principals from all three schools with us today. Our first honoree is Center Hill Middle School in the DeSoto County School District, representing the school's principal Larry Hill. I mean Larry Hood. Center Hill Middle School is a high-performing school, building a tradition of excellence through a commitment to fundamental quality in all aspects of academic performance. School personnel demonstrate collaborative and concerted efforts to not only maintain a consistent level of above-average student achievement, but also adapt data-driven instruction to target areas of improvement necessary to sustain continued success. The school's focus is on creating an environment where students feel welcome and can contribute to their community. You will learn more about that later in the school's spotlight video. Congratulations to Center Hill Middle School on this outstanding achievement. Mr. Hood, you're welcome to make comments at this time.
I wasn't sure if I'd have the speaker going, but I would take just a minute. When I went to Washington, I couldn't take all of the staff and students because I took a picture of them with me. So they all got to go with it in spirit. But I get asked by administrators in our district, and we have four different schools. I get asked by administrators in our district, and I'm sure everyone else does too, that's receiving the award. What got you to here? And if it wasn't me, it's the hard work of the students, the parents, the teachers, the school leaders, the state leader.
Next, we recognize Eastside Elementary School in the Clinton Public School District. Ms. Cindy Hamel, principal, is representing the school, and Dr. Martin, superintendent, is here as well. Eastside Elementary School is characterized by its extreme pursuit of excellence and is committed to the educational philosophy that all students can learn. The school has given a unique opportunity in that all fourth and fifth grade students in the community attend Eastside, regardless of race, cultural background, socioeconomic background, gender, and exceptionality. Leading such a diverse population to be highly successful academically requires a major focus on data-driven, standards-focused instruction. Teachers consistently assess and review data to ensure that students' needs are being addressed appropriately through student-centered instruction. Relationships with parents and the community provide a sense of belonging and pride for students, and the administration's open-door policy capitalizes on the idea that all stakeholders, including their ideas and concerns, are welcome. At least two of the community stakeholders just happen to be with us today, Ms. Rosemary Altman and Dr. Felicia Gavin, a member of the Clinton School District Boards. My name is... That's off to Eastside Elementary. Ms. Hamel, you can make remarks now.
Ralph Alden Emerson, and I've said this before, he says that nothing great can happen without enthusiasm. And one thing I think this award has done, not only for my school, but for the other two schools in our district that have also, are also recognized as Blue Ribbon Schools, is that it brings a lot of enthusiasm, not just to the school, but to the community and all of those stakeholders involved. So we are very excited, and it's been a great process. Our staff grew while going through this process, which I think is part of the purpose. And we're just very, very thankful. Thanks, Dr. Wright and board. We appreciate what y'all have come out. We appreciate it.
Our final honoree is North Bay Elementary School in the Biloxi Public School District. The school is represented by Principal Teresa Martin. As a Title I school with over 55% of students receiving free or reduced lunch, the staff works diligently to differentiate instruction to meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of all students. Through an unwavering commitment year after year to excellence from all and for all, North Bay sets high standards for academics and discipline. This is the school's second USD National Blue Ribbon School recognition. It was previously recognized in 2011. An ongoing commitment to excellence is apparent with this national second Blue Ribbon Award. Congratulations.
Because I'm here today without my teachers, I have just a very short something that I would like to read that one of my, thought it would be nice to give you some insight as to how our stakeholders feel about Blue Ribbon. And I would like to share what one of my third grade teachers wrote. She wrote, "Blue Ribbon isn't just an award or recognition. It's a mindset. It's a mindset among administrators that they must push and prepare their teachers to be intentional and effective in every available moment. It's a mindset among teachers that they must analyze each student's needs academically, emotionally, and physically, and at all times be ready to play the role that student needs right in that moment. It's a mindset among parents that their children are in the best possible place, with the best possible educators, with the best possible resources, and of course, working towards the best possible results. It's a mindset among students that they can and they will succeed because all of us, from administrators, to parents, to teachers, to custodians, and of course, to the cafeteria family, and the bus drivers, we all believe in them and invest in them because we know they deserve every bit of success they earn. And most importantly, it's a mindset that we are all in this journey towards success together because we care, we believe, we are a family, and of course, we are North Bay." So that's just a little something in front of us.
In closing, we congratulate all the National Blue Ribbon Award winners. You are great representatives of outstanding public education in Mississippi. This is our board recognition for the month.
Also, thank you to the superintendent, Arthur McMillan, for coming as well. So we've got two of our three superintendents. I know your superintendent is at a board meeting himself, otherwise he'd have been right here beside you. So congratulations, all three.
Great, thanks. Now we'll move to the report of the state superintendent.
Good morning. I want you to take a look at your orange folder for a minute here. In the left-hand side, I want you to, you've got a great deal of pride in this. This is the superintendent's annual report, and this was also supplied to all of our legislators as well. And this gives you a real great synopsis of exactly what has taken place in the state. We've got a lot of data here, a lot of good data points, and we're going to be talking about that a little bit later. But I want to also, if you take a look at this page that kind of opens up and looks like this, is Melissa Banks in the room? Melissa, I need you to stand up, girlfriend. So you want to know where all this talent came from? That young woman that's standing right over there. She, in addition to her regular job, is a graphics person, and so she has become the go-to person. So all the graphics that you see are on Melissa. And I really wanted to bring her here to really recognize that. The staff has talked about you again and again and again, so if your ears are burning, I want you to know that's all been very positive. But this is a great way for us to really brag about what's happening in Mississippi, and I encourage you to take the time to look through it. If you're ever out speaking, these are great talking points because Mississippi's got a lot to be proud of, and this really culminates, you know, in a great annual report. So that's the one thing. And the other big piece of news is on your right-hand side because Quality Counts, which is published by Educational Week, has come out with the first of their three reports. Mississippi was recognized in this report for the success that it's had. And just to remind you, we have moved from a D minus two years ago to a C minus to a C, heading right in the right direction, and they highlighted Mississippi's work. So this is a national publication. This will be out for, it probably was produced yesterday afternoon. So this is our press release that's going to go out about it. And behind that, you will actually see the tables, although you may need a magnifying glass. But the tables will let you know each of the areas that the Quality Counts looks at. So some of these areas K-12 has, absolutely has control over. Others, we do not. So if you're thinking about family income, parent education, parental employment, linguistic integration, those are the first three under early foundations. And then if you flip to the second page, preschool enrollment, kindergarten enrollment, fourth grade reading, eighth grade math, high school graduation, young adult education, adult educational attainment, annual income, and steady employment. So those are all aspects that they look at across the nation. And you will see all 50 states listed here. And the one thing you will not see, you will not see Mississippi at the bottom. So I encourage you to really take a look at this and look at it. So a lot to be proud of. The only, two other things I want to talk about, I went to the Houston School District. The only, two other things I want to talk about, I went to the Houston School District. They had their convocation, and so they had the entire staff and all their principals in, and it was a great time to really give them a lot of praise and teachers a lot of praise for the work that they're doing because we could not do this without all the outstanding teachers that we have across the state. And also, I just finished a call with Bellwether. Bellwether is a national nonprofit, and they are doing a case study on Mississippi because of the success that we've had. And that will be a nationally-produced case study, but you need to know that that goes right along with the national study that was done by the National Assessment Governing Board, and also the case study that was, is being done. We have not seen the results of that one yet by Jeb Bush's Foundation for Excellence in Education. So everybody is asking about us and talking about us nationally, and so there's a lot to be very, 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 very proud of what's going on across our state. Our leaders, our teachers, our district leaders doing an outstanding job in every way. I did produce NAEP, the National Assessment of Education Progress, which you know is the nation's report card, are, that starts at the end of this month. Districts are selected and students are selected at random. It is not a, it is not a census sample, it is a sampling of schools and districts around each state. And so we are, once again, one of the states that was, all states are chosen, but randomly districts are chosen. And so what I thought I'd do is create a video, so I wanted you to, I have not seen this video. I created this video along with my wonderful communications team. And so we send, sending this out to districts and principals, and hopefully they will share that with their teachers. So I thought you might get to enjoy it. So there you go. Congratulations. Your school has been selected to represent Mississippi on the national stage. You will participate in the National Assessment for Educational Progress, also known as NAEP. People sometimes refer to it as the nation's report card because it is the largest nationally-representative assessment of what America's students know and can do in various subject areas. This is not just another test, this is an opportunity for Mississippi students to show that they're just as smart and capable as students in other states, to attract businesses and industry to invest in our state, and to build upon the progress the state has made in better preparing our students for college and the workforce. Did you know that other states are talking about Mississippi's educational achievements, and in a very positive way? States are watching what has happened in Mississippi over the last several years. I know because state education chiefs in other states have asked me, what are we doing to get the gains that we've seen? We have made unprecedented growth in 2015 on NAEP, and we sustained that progress in 2017. In fact, over the last 10 years, Mississippi's academic achievement has outpaced the nation. That's due to the hard work and dedication of our school leaders, teachers, and students. In addition, the results from this test help companies determine where they're going to expand their businesses. The nation's report card is the only education measure that is comparable across states. So we want employers to know that Mississippi's future workforce is prepared and ready for the jobs of tomorrow. Finally, our students have been challenged in reading and math, and they are making Mississippi history. Schools are better preparing our students for the demands of college and the workforce, and students are rising to that challenge. This test is just another way to show just how far we've come. I strongly believe that students in Mississippi can achieve anything with the right support. So please encourage our students to do their very best on the NAEP test. Good luck, and I look forward to seeing your results. Good luck to everybody out there that's going to be doing that at the end of the month. So on to spotlight, and we're going to spotlight Center Hill. So I've asked our principal to stay. Center Hill, as you know, is in DeSoto, and it's one of Mississippi's three national Blue Ribbon Schools for 2018. And we thought we'd spotlight it because it is an absolutely exemplary middle school. And middle schools, as we all know, have very unique challenges with their little ones, and they are the bridge between elementary into high. And as you know, students are going through a lot of changes. They're trying to get their coursework ramped up to be ready for the rigor of high school. And I think you're going to see how Center Hill has done an amazing job of really focusing on the whole child, which I think is really important. It's not just the academic needs, but their social and emotional needs as well. And I had the pleasure of coming up to Center Hill for their Blue Ribbon Award, and I've got to tell you how incredibly impressed I was. They had it outside, so I want you to picture a group of middle schoolers with, how many students did you have outside? Okay, so 800 students, and you had standing room only with parents, and you had the band that was out there. I mean, I want you to get the whole picture. Not a sound during the entire ceremony, and the moment that the principal stepped to the podium, there'd been a little chitter-chatter, immediately stopped. All those children's eyes were on him, and great representation from our legislature, businesses, the police, the firemen. I mean, it was an all-community event. And it just, and the other part was really, kind of tickled me, when we walked in, students were leading the tours. So I love that because you get to see some of the most precocious little ones ever, and they are just as knowledgeable about that school and what's going on in these classrooms, and this is Miss so-and-so's classroom, and this is what she teaches. And I mean, it was, it was just a delight. So we thought, why not spotlight Center Hill so you can see what a middle school, what a middle school looks like that's doing such an outstanding job? So with that, we'll go to our spotlight.
I think that middle school is one of the hardest times to navigate as a student because so much about who you are is changing, and one of those things is finding just who you are, your niche, your strengths. I think that we try to keep that at the center of a lot of decisions that are made here because we do have a standard of excellence, and we have high expectations for them. But we also want to make sure that they feel that they have control in where they're going and the choices that they make, and that they see that good choices have good consequences.
I think the best thing about being a student at Center Hill Middle School is just how caring everyone is and how supportive everyone is, and how easy it is to like, talk to everyone. I do feel safe at Center Hill Middle School because I feel like if I ever needed to like, talk to a teacher or administrator about something, then I could easily do that.
I feel like the students here work really hard. They, they want to do well, they want to be successful in the classroom as well as outside of the classroom, and it makes it easier for us as teachers because when they want to be successful, it helps us to prepare them and lead them along that way. I do help with the cheerleading group here and also with student council, and it allows the students to show their talents outside of the classroom. Not everybody is going to be an academic all-star, but everybody does have talents, and with our community service organizations, they are able to show those talents off as well.
I believe that community service projects help to make Center Hill Middle School a Blue Ribbon School because it makes the students well-rounded. They, they're not only here for the academic aspect of it and the social aspect of it, but they know that they can serve their community just by becoming involved with the different organizations here at Center Hill Middle School.
I do participate in community service projects because I'm in the Veda Club, and we do Child Advocacy Center and Plant Pinwheels. We plant pinwheels because each pinwheel represents a child that has gotten services from the Higling Hearts Advocacy Center.
The National Blue Ribbon School Award is the top achievement on a national level for our schools. It's an amazing honor for us. It's, it's one of those awards that wherever you are in America, if you tell someone that you've got a Blue Ribbon School, they know what that means.
Our teachers make learning fun at the school. They incorporate technology, which our students use a lot of technology at home, more so than we did growing up. But we have younger teachers and some experienced teachers that are incorporating more technology to teach students the way they learn and not just the way we want them to learn.
Center Hill Middle School is such a special place. Anytime that you visit here, it's obvious to anyone that the teamwork here between the administrators and the faculty and staff and the students is amazing. There's just such a commitment to excellence here to where it's obvious that the, the teachers want the very, very best for their students, and the students thrive to succeed at such a high level.
The atmosphere in the school is very loving. Like, you can tell that each teacher and administrator cares for you, and they'll do anything to help you out.
Congratulations to Center Hill Middle.
Thank you. Appreciate the work that you're doing. As a father of a middle school child, we got to talk. No, I'm just kidding. She's fantastic. So for my report, I do have a couple of items to report on. We're still finalizing one of our subcommittees, the Workforce Career and Technical Education Subcommittee. We'll talk about the chair and the members probably at the February meeting. I've also requested that we set up a meet, a tour of the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. I don't know about y'all, but you know, this last month where we had the football players come in, it was just really impressive, young group of men, and would love to have the opportunity to go and learn more about what's going on at Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. As we all know, that's our school, we're the board of that school. And so I've asked the department to set up a tour. I know everybody has busy schedules, but the day before our next, or excuse me, the day before our March meeting at 10:00 a.m. at the school, we've arranged a tour to be, to be led by Mrs. Rogers, who's the current superintendent. So I would urge you to please put that on your calendar, if you're available, to come in a little bit early the day before our board meeting at 10:00 a.m. We'll take a tour, and very much look forward to that. I was born and raised in Jackson. I've driven by that facility a bajillion times, and I'm ashamed to say I've never walked in the door, so I'm very much looking forward to that. Next on my list is sort of along the same lines. I've asked the department staff to consider identifying a school that we can travel to as a board and have our meeting, probably in a March-April timeframe. Sort of the parameters of it would be preferably a rural school, underperforming, low-performing, choose your adjective, 30, 45 minutes from Jackson, so it's not too onerous on the budget for your travel. You know, I just think it's really important that we at least consider the opportunity to get out there and spend a little time seeing, you know, where the rubber hits the road and what our practitioners, our teachers, administrators, support staff are dealing with day in and day out. So if that works out and it's not too, too hard on the budget, I would certainly keep you, keep you posted on the development of that. But you know, I would say probably a March-April timeframe. Obviously, we can't run too, too close to the summer or testing, and we certainly don't want to be a distraction. But I think that'd be a good, good, good idea for the board to get out and, and see some of the work that's going on and do our work. Lastly, I need to report on the state superintendent's evaluation process timeline. Something we do every year through our evaluation. We've contracted with NASB to provide the evaluation tool. So I'll read into the minute sort of the timeline and ask everyone to hold yourselves accountable to meeting the deadlines without going into a whole bunch of detail. January 17th, state superintendent presents a strategic plan. January 18th, tomorrow, the evaluation document will be emailed to each of you. And through the first, there will be the evaluation period with the period of evaluation closing on February 2nd, with the evaluation results submitted to the board on February 8th, and evaluation results February 21st. So we'll, we'll get the presentation today, we'll get the evaluation tool tomorrow. You've got a couple of weeks to fill it out, please fill it out, turn in on time, and then we'll discuss the results. So that will be forthcoming. Okay. So without questions, I'll move to now the report.
If I may, I'm glad to hear you say that the board is going to get out and visit some of the schools. In the years past, we used to do a lot of that, and the parents and the education community accepted that's real well, and thought a lot of it. So I'm glad to hear you say that the board will be getting out, going to visit some of the education committees.
I would love to talk to you separately about, you know, what that experience was like in ways that we can build upon and improve, but thank you for saying that. So we'll now do the report on the subcommittee meetings. Let me just start with the legislative one because I know they met, and I know there's others. I'm the chairman of the legislative, that's why I know that we met this morning. Just a couple of things. First, we kind of walked through the timeline of the legislative schedule. We talked about the, you know, the deadlines for, for bills to be dropped and considered. We're still working through when the education committees will be meeting. I've encouraged not only the subcommittee board members to attend as, as you're available, I certainly intend to attend as many as I possibly can, but anybody on the board that could attend. And we talked through some of our legislative priorities and the importance of them, and ensuring that a bill's dropped that, that mirrors each of those legislative priorities. And I'll say, we've scheduled a, a meeting this afternoon to meet with Lieutenant Governor just to sort of urge along a lot of these legislative priorities and remind Lieutenant Governor that, you know, we're here to support, and we're here to ensure that the, the voice of education's heard, and certainly intend to be fully engaged during this, this regular session and in, in the years to come. Other, that's it for my subcommittee meeting. Other subcommittee reports? Yes, ma'am.
The academic achievement for K-12 Subcommittee met yesterday afternoon. We received two informational items, the first being an update, a biannual report on professional development. Forty-six hundred and sixteen educators across the state participated in some kind of professional development, and out of that number, 255 participated online. So the online resources are being used. Forty percent of the districts that we serve, someone out of those districts participated. But the good news is that a number of these educators who participated are from our lower-performing, struggling school districts. So that's good news that they're getting professional development. The other thing that we were updated on was a guide that's been developed by a collaboration all across, from different departments all across the agency, and it's called an Access for All Guide. And this, this guide is to provide administrators and teachers, or anyone involved in the school district, with guidance on providing strategies and supports for struggling learners based on their, the deficits that they exhibit. And it is a tiered hierarchy of modifications or accommodations that can be given a student depending on what their need is and how they learn. So it's, it's layered, so to speak, that if they need minimal support, they're given suggestions as to what can be done, and up to intensive work. So there is a hierarchy of that. And then, beginning in February, there'll be meetings around the state in different areas across the state so that educators can become familiar with this. And this afternoon, it'll be rolled out in a webinar. So it, there are all kinds of areas. If a child needs help with word recognition, if they need help with comprehension, if they, all these various levels, this gives you ideas and suggestions to be able to help. But the good thing is, we think about this typically in elementary school, but this goes all the way through high school. And so it will be a learning process for some educators who are not used to sort of that one-on-one and teaching a subject, one subject matter, for example. So anyway, it's an exciting piece of documentation, and it's, obviously was a lot of work, but I think it'll be very helpful to our school districts.
Questions, comments? Okay. Next, subcommittee report. Dr. Hill?
The School Performance and Accountability Subcommittee did meet this morning. There was a discussion around the appeal of the final accountability results for three school districts, the current school district, Harrison County School District, and Pasca Gula-Goshey School District. The last two are special schools that involve special schools. You're going to hear a lot more about this. It's the first agenda item that we have for action. The second thing we did, we heard an audit of some school districts, community colleges, and four-year colleges and universities. We learned that there were no findings found in the community colleges nor our four-year colleges, but there were some minor findings in several of our school districts. A couple of them involve finances not being what they, what they should be. But we also learned that some help will be given to those districts where findings were identified in our districts, our school districts. The last thing we got was an update on student representation on the state school board. The last thing we got was an update on student representation on the State School Board. Several months back, this board elected to have school students become a part of the board. That information has gone out to school districts. We learned this morning that there appears to be a lot of excitement from school districts that are preparing to have students make the request. There has been a subcommittee that's been assigned to look at all applications that come from school districts around the state. Ms. Aldman is the board's representative on that subcommittee. That subcommittee will bring back to us 10 students, that we will narrow it down to come up with two student reps to serve on this board. We're really excited about that. We think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to learn from students and for the students themselves to learn really good leadership skills. So we're excited about it. That is the results of the School Performance and Accountability Subcommittee.
Comments? Any other subcommittee meeting reports? Okay. Here are none. Then we will move on now to the heart of our agenda, the discussion of board items. And number one is the action consideration of the appeals of the final accountability results in accordance with Policy 3.1.4 of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards. And we have 1A, 1B, and 1C. So we'll take these separately. 1A is Corinth School District, 1B Harrison County School District, and 1C Pascagoula-Goschee School District. And while we're kind of getting set up and prepared, one of the slight changes that I've decided on as chair, it's always been a little awkward to go through the action items and then vote on them, which sometimes could be right away or sometimes it could be hours later. And so as a kind of a change in process with advice of the council, we're gonna vote on each of these as we go. So there'll be a presentation, there'll be a motion to adopt, we'll move on to the next one, motion to, you know, as we go, so that it's not at the end of the day after these, you know, so if there's any questions on that. And then with the consent, it'll be a little bit different. We'll vote on the consent, you know, all together as the consent instead of each individual. So with the action items, we'll vote after each. So that's my decision. And before we get started, there is one other little administrative housekeeping. So in this presentation, this is a little bit of a precedent setting in that we've had a request from school districts to come and make presentations as part of this appeal. The board doesn't currently have policy that addresses that, but you know, I think it's, well, I shouldn't say as the chair, but if someone wants to come, I think it's incumbent upon the board to consider that. And so in a minute, I will ask for some motion that would allow for the members of each of these districts to come with a time limit of, I would recommend 10 minutes, it could be different, to come and make their presentation. So the process for this appeals process would be as follows. We have the State Department make their comments for the time period that's required. Superintendent of the district make his or her comment for 10 minutes, and this is a process of moving forward, and then allow the department to have similar time for rebuttal, and then a Q and A for both parties, and then we'll discuss it as a board, and then we'll move to vote on the commission's recommendation. So I'll say it again. The department presents, the superintendent presents, the department rebuts, we Q and A, we discuss, and we vote on the motion. And that's how we'll handle A, B, and C, but we'll vote on them at the conclusion of each. So we'll talk about Corinth and then vote on that, then move on to B. Okay? Clear? Great. With that, Dr. Anferro, I'll turn over to you.
Good morning. It's Dr. Dean.
Oh, I apologize.
I started to say, don't you need a vote?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I need a motion. So what I just described, someone needs to make that motion. I apologize. My bad.
It was so good it explained it. I saw, okay, I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Discussion. What about the time limit on the rebuttal?
Same.
Same.
Yeah. So if there, in other words, if there are, you know, concerns or, you know, clarification that needs to be made after the 10 minutes, you will have 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes to do that, to, you know, make a different case or whatever it is. Okay? Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. So there's a motion and a second, no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Pass. Now.
Thank you. As Dr. Dean stated, item number one is an action item that is consideration of the appeals of the final accountability results in accordance with Policy 3.1.4 of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards. The actual item, number one, contains some background information, just as a reminder that on October the 11th, 2018, the State Board of Education approved the 2017-2018 Mississippi statewide accountability results, with the exception of four schools with special populations, three schools within the Corinth School District and the Corinth School District. Then on November the 8th, the State Board approved the final accountability results for the Corinth School District, the three schools within the school district, and then the four schools with the special populations, with the caveat that these were unofficial results. Later, after the board's final approval, the Office of Accreditation received appeals from three of the school districts listed in the board item, Corinth School District, Harrison County School District, Pascagoula-Goschee School District. And the Corinth School District appealed the results for the district as well as three schools within the district, and then Harrison County had one school within the district, the Harrison County Child Development Center, and then the Pascagoula-Goschee District appealed results for one school within their district, the Pascagoula-Goschee exceptional school. On December the 10th, the Internal Review Committee met to consider the appeals and unanimously voted to deny the appeals from all three of the school districts. Accreditation had a special called meeting on January the 10th, 2019, to consider the decision of the Internal Review Committee. On page two of your backup, you'll see that it indicates that the recommendations for each of the school districts are outlined in Item 1A for Corinth, Item 1B for the Harrison County School District, and Item 1C. So behind each of the tabs, you have the documentation that was submitted to the Commission on School Accreditation on behalf of the agency, as well as each school district. So behind tab one, you'll have the Policy 3.1.4, as well as a summary of the Internal Review Committee's notes that was held on December the 10th. And then you have the PowerPoint presentation that was presented to the Commission on January the 10th. So then we'll move to tab 1A. It's of course specific to the Corinth School District, and you have behind that tab all of the supporting documentation that was provided by the Corinth School District to the Commission. At the bottom, you'll see that after presentations by Dr. Childress, who's the superintendent of the Corinth School District, and the MDE at the CSA, voted 6-2 to uphold the Internal Review Committee's decision by the Corinth School District's appeal. Moving on to Item 1B for the Harrison County School District, the last sentence of the last paragraph on page one of that backup, the after presentation by Mr. Roy Gill and the MDE, the CSA voted to grant the appeal to the Harrison County School District. On page two, you'll see the rationale that the granting of the appeal by the Commission for Harrison County School District is in conflict with state statute as well as federal statute, and you'll see the note that there's no provision in state law that prohibits an exemption for special schools, our schools with a special population. Item 1C is for the Pascagoula-Goschee School District. The last sentence of the last paragraph on page one of that backup indicates that after presentations by Mr. Rudolphis, who's the superintendent of the Pascagoula-Goschee School District, and the MDE, that the Commission also voted to grant the appeal to the Pascagoula-Goschee School District. And then same note regarding the state law and the, which indicates there's no provision for an exemption, same as Item 1B.
Make additional comments after each presentation.
Okay. 1A, 1B, 1C? Okay.
Correct.
Well, if we're gonna vote on each of them, it seems that we should take all of them together. So if you're gonna make additional presentations from the department as it relates to Corinth, you can do that now. Otherwise, after we have this discussion, we're gonna vote on it. So it's gonna be a moot point after we voted it, you know, on each of them individually.
That's all right. Miss Underston?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. So we'll walk through at this point what we shared with the Commission on School Accreditation last Thursday on the 10th. As you know, we start with our vision and mission that shaped the work of you as a board and us as a state, and the goals that we look at so closely each day to do this work. I'll start first off with Mississippi Code. As alluded to previously, under Mississippi Code, the State Board, through the department, is to implement a single A through F system for district and school accountability performance that started in 1112 school year and has continued going forward. That is in compliance with state and federal law. Would also remind you that under that same section, 37176, a little further down, there's a requirement to revise that old accountability model, move to the A through F system, and discontinue the use of the prior labels that were in place some years ago. And then ultimately, to combine both the state model and the federal model into a single system that is approved by the federal government. That is our current accountability model as approved under our ESSA plan. Want to be very clear, there are not exclusions within the law, the state law, regarding the assignment of grades to schools with special populations or to districts or schools of innovation. There are instances where we have students in alternative settings who have scores that are reported back to their local school district where they're only placed in that school setting for a brief period of time, but for those students that attend year over year over year like they would at one of the two special schools on the coast or in Corinth, those schools do receive grades. The District of Innovation Law is a law that has been discussed related to this because of Corinth's label as a District of Innovation. 37179 is the code section connected to the District of Innovation, and it requires compliance with the statewide assessment system and use of standards that meet or exceed those standards adopted by the State Board. Further, does not allow for grade exclusion, but it really speaks to approval of some flexibility around personnel, school schedule, alternative ed, and related topics. This law also does not speak to or allow for substitution of exams within the model, does require compliance with the statewide assessment system. I would draw your attention, this statewide system of assessment is our MAP assessment, but it's a two-pronged test. There's MAP, the majority of our students take in state, and then there's MAP-A, the Mississippi Academic Assessment Program Alternate Assessment, that is designed specifically for those students with the most significant cognitive disabilities. It's designed by Mississippi teachers to assess performance on alternative standards for those students that are, that do have severe learning disabilities, that are severely involved. It's not a computer-based test. It is a test that a teacher or two teachers, two adults would give to the student one-on-one, and then would score the results and key those in for those individual students. So it's designed for this specific population of students in question. And so while this single system across the state does include some other components, grad rate, ACT, dual credit, et cetera, a lot of that portion, a lot of that score comes from the MAP assessment. And as was shared last week with the Commission on School Accreditation by Dr. Childress, Corinth did not take, I think the ratings on MAP were going to contribute to their overall results, and so they didn't pay a lot of attention to those assessments when they were taken. When we look at the federal side, the ESSA side of this, and kind of look at the timeline, you're familiar with this. We shared very similar information with you back in November, October, November timeframe. ESSA passed in December of 2015, and we spent the next spring walking through state laws, board policy, strategic plan, looking for alignment. We had a work session with the board in December, actually that fall, in the fall of 16, the Office of District School Performance and Accountability began work with Corinth on an alternative model, trying to figure out what might be a viable option in light of February 16, 2016 approval of their District of Innovation status. Ultimately, through the next year or so, we were unable to find a viable solution to that. Didn't really fully understand, I think, across staff in the agency until the summer of 18, that all of the schools, including schools of special populations, had to be included in that calculation. There was a meeting with U.S. Department of Ed staff in June, followed by a subsequent letter to Corinth regarding the inclusion of their scores, or inclusion of them, and the assignment of grades for the 1718 school year. As we look further at ESA requirements, students have to be assessed through a consistent measure across the state, and that system has to meaningfully differentiate schools through that single statewide system. It's got to include academic proficiency on state assessments. Those are our MAP and MAP-A assessments. It's got to include graduation rates for high school, English language progress for proficiency, as well as another statewide indicator. For us, we use science, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as an additional state set indicator of school quality or student success beyond that. And then there's a requirement that we assess 95% of our students under this model. There are some options for flexibility under ESSA, and I want to draw your attention to both of these. At this point, there's an option that allows for flexibility in high schools to use a nationally recognized assessment such as ACT, SAT, Cambridge could be considered another, and that's what Corinth is using. They allow it to be used in lieu of the state assessment with caveats. The assessments first and foremost have to be aligned to state standards. There have been a number of waiver denials from the U.S. Department of Ed, most recently in December. Virginia was denied flexibility for the use of some options on intercourse assessments because they were not using assessments that were going to hold all students to the same academic standards and use the same assessments to measure the achievement of all students. So similar to our situation with Corinth, we've had other states that have been down this path, applying for this pretty complex waiver and spending a lot of time and effort to get it done, only to have it denied by Department of Ed staff in DC. But these assessments, in addition to alignment, are used for accountability, have to meet technical requirements regarding accommodations for students, and they have to be, if they're LEA selected, have to be approved by the state and then subsequently peer reviewed by the U.S. Department of Education for use. There is a separate allowance under ESSA for an innovative assessment pilot, and this is for a limited number of states that are applying, but open to states that want to try to use competency-based or performance-based assessments within their schools. They can pilot those assessments in a small set of districts, but they have to ultimately scale up to use those same assessments across the state, if the pilot's successful, or ultimately if it's not, to pull back and not pursue that. The pilot includes, on this side includes criteria and safeguards, alignment requirements, again, to our state standards, and eventual statewide implementation if it's going to be rolled forward. Ultimately, currently, there's only two states that have received this waiver, being Louisiana and New Hampshire. Really, at the end of the day, the flexibility is limited for ESA, and as reflected in the dial, we've seen from other states to other states, USD is holding fast to the fact that these assessment systems have to be uniform and aligned to state-adoption standards. The federal law is clear that all the schools must be included in the system of differentiation, and state law requires a single state or federal model, state and federal model, that assigns grades using that single A through F system. Thank you.
Well, now, maybe find a chair for Dr. Childress to, or, okay, are y'all gonna, yeah, that'd be fine. Yep. All right. And that little delightful jingle you heard a second ago was me keeping the time, and whenever your 10 minutes is up, that will go off. So Dr. Childress, welcome, and thanks for making the...
Give me a two-minute warning, please, sir, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, I will.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Wright, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you today. It's been said that insanity can be defined as doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. Although Corinth has always obtained outstanding results and superior accountability ratings, the Corinth community knew that our students were capable of more. They challenged the school district to transcend existing expectations and help each student unlock their academic potential. In 2012, we adopted a district mission and vision that directs us to provide our children a world-class, 21st century educational experience in which all graduating students will be equipped with the college and career readiness skills they need to succeed in a global-based knowledge society. and career readiness skills they need to succeed in a global-based knowledge society. This curriculum aligns with our vision and mission by focusing on higher-order thinking skills such as critical thinking, analysis, and application of knowledge. Students are challenged through rigorous exams consisting primarily of open-ended and essay items, lab or project-based experiences, which assess what you understand or are able to apply instead of utilizing multiple-choice items that typically assess what you can memorize. Corinth's DOI request was, and is far different from any of the other District of Innovation requests you've approved. That's why we're in the situation here today. In February 2016, you, the State Board of Education, partnered with us in this ongoing effort to prepare our children to be successful anywhere on the globe. We know what we're doing is working, and we, and we can prove it because this is about the children. On an independent, objective measure, the 2018 graduating class had an ACT average of 20.9, exceeding the national average and outpacing the state public high school average by 2.6. We had an increase in the composite score of .7 points over the past year while Mississippi was flat. The reading sub-score increased by 1.4 while the states remained the same. Today, you will see in your backup materials that our graduation rate is 94.8%, number four in the state, far above the 84% state average, not indicative of an F school. 82 students have earned an ACE diploma since 2012, and we expect more to achieve it with spring testing. 49 students, or 40% of the 2019 class, have already passed three or more Advanced International Certificate of Education exams, the equivalent of Advanced Placement. 65 seniors of 52 have earned at least one ACE credit. Our students, teachers, and administrators have stepped up to the plate. We've increased the rigor for all children. We are seeing that all Corinth children can challenge these rigorous high school exams. We've had two top-of-the-country award winners in last spring's administration of the International General Certificate of Secondary Education exams given to eighth, ninth, and 10th graders. With five previous top-of-the-country award winners, we now have seven, all on the same exams which we wish to substitute in the accountability model. What we are doing is working. An F rating for Corinth High School is not a credible measure of that school's performance. C and D ratings for the district and other schools are not credible. It's an unjustifiable black eye on the district and the Corinth community. In February 2016, you, the Board, voted to designate Corinth a District of Innovation and grant us a waiver from measuring our success by the MAP assessment, allowing us to substitute Cambridge assessments for MAP. Mississippi Department of Education officials recommended it. You, the Board, directed the MDE to work with us to develop the Modified Accountability Model. For two and a half years, the Mississippi Department of Education told us they were working on the model. They had to be telling you the same thing because you didn't assign us ratings in 2015, 16, or 1617. Although we didn't know it at the time, something obviously changed in April of 2018. The MDE decided unilaterally, without approval from you, the Board, to abandon Corinth and stop working on the Board. You, the State Board of Education, didn't tell them to stop. Since that time, MDE's stated reasons for not following the Board directive has changed three times. First, you were told in your September and October meetings that ESA doesn't allow substituting Cambridge for MAP assessments. But Dr. Oakley told you in November, and he told the Commission last week and again today, that ESA does have the flexibility to allow the substitution of locally-selected, nationally-recognized assessments like Cambridge in lieu of the state assessments. ESA is a non-issue. Secondly, the MDE claims the District of Innovation Law requires the use of MAP assessments. Again, this is not true. Section 3 of the MDE's DOI Rules and Regulations approved by you, this Board state, "Districts must meet the requirements of the current accountability standards unless specifically described in the innovative plan and approved by the SBE." That's exactly what we requested in the plan, a waiver to substitute Cambridge for MAP. That's exactly what this Board approved in granting that waiver to 3717-6. State law is not an issue. Third, the MDE finally admitted that it chose not to allow alternate assessments. Dr. Wright in an October 8, 2018 memo to local school district superintendent said, "While ESA allows flexibility in assessments, the state did not choose to implement innovative testing." Dr. Vanderford told the Commission last week, "The agency made the determination that we are not going to apply for the waivers that were allowed under ESA." With all due respect, the MDE does not have the authority to simply ignore this Board's clear directives. You have never rescinded the waiver. All we have asked for and continue to ask for is that the SBE fulfill its promise and not abandon our partnership. We are doing something innovative, and it's working. Direct the MDE to do what you approved. Sit down with us, work to develop a modified accountability model that uses the flexibility in ESA to substitute Cambridge for MAP. It will take time and effort. We are committed. It will take resources. We've offered before, and the offer remains. We will foot the bill. Let's work collaboratively with the U.S. Department of Education prior to the review. We know from a public records request, the only communication the Department had with the USD about this issue is a brief conversation at the National Conference on Student Assessment and a follow-up email to a question they posed that really didn't address what we've asked for or what you approved in the waiver. We believe the USD will approve the plan if you approve one for us, but we don't know because the MDE has never tried to get it approved. See, when the MDE submitted the state ESA plan to the USD in September of 2017, they chose not to request approval of Cambridge under ESA's flexibility, a fact they didn't bother to tell anyone for a year. We are convinced that what we have requested is permissible. In February of 2016, MDE staff was convinced it was permissible. In February of 2016, this Board was convinced it was permissible. The law hasn't changed since then. ESA was passed and signed into law in 2015. The DOI law and performance-based accreditation laws haven't changed since this plan was submitted. In February 2016, we were all convinced that this was permissible, and we are confident it still is. The Mississippi Legislature in 3712 says that the state of Mississippi shall establish a credible process for measuring and rating schools. Don't punish Corinth by allowing these grades, which are not a credible measure of our success, to stand. This Board and the MDE gave their blessings to what we requested. Furthermore, Section 3716-5 of the Mississippi Code allows for the substitution of Cambridge data, saying, "Each district may provide acceptable, compatible district assessment data to substitute for any assessment data needed at the state level." We are in this together. Don't abandon us now. Withdraw our ratings. Don't assign any further ratings until you modify the accountability system. Before you give the CSA's recommendation too much credence, know this, that the same attorney, MDE attorney, who advised the Department and advocated against us on these very issues over our objection, served as counsel to CSA and advised that if CSA found in our favor, it would be in violation of state law. Not only is that incorrect, but it tainted the CSA's recommendation to you. Keep your promise you made to the Corinth School District and require the MDE to work with Corinth. We're plowing new ground. We're used to that in Corinth. It's what we've been doing since our initial implementation of Cambridge and as a District of Innovation. When we are successful, we will open up opportunities and benefits for other districts around the state. Let's work together. Fulfill the promise you made to Corinth, our schools, our students, and the community. Fulfill the spirit and intent of the District of Innovation Law to provide the best educational opportunities to the children of Corinth and Mississippi. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Dr. Childress, so what we'll do is now ask the Department staff to come and make any rebuttals. You have 10 minutes, and then when that's over, we'll do Q and A with both parties. And please keep it specific to his comments. No new introduction of anything new.
All right, so let's start back quickly and just look at these ESSA slides again, make sure that we are all on the same page about what is required here. Single measure of performance applied consistently across the state with a single system and academic proficiency on the state assessments is required under ESSA. Where there is flexibility, he's requested flexibility across his grade levels. There is high school assessment flexibility for a high school and, of course, nationally-recognized assessment. That is not what is being requested here across 38 and high school. In October 8, 2018, a letter from Dr. Childress to the Department, he acknowledged that Cambridge does not precisely align to our Mississippi College Accreditation standards. Our standards and our assessments align. Cambridge does not match those. The state, the innovative assessment, again, is for rollout across the state. The Corinth request would not fall under this model, and the other flexibility for waivers under the law, in each instance that we have looked at where they have requested a waiver from this single statewide assessment, states have been denied. The most recent one, as I shared earlier, being Virginia. Would also remind you as a Board, as we worked through this, the innovative school law does require compliance with the statewide assessment model and the accountability system. And ultimately, state law does trump board policy or board action, as does federal law, trump board policy and board action. And then finally, we just remind you, in December, excuse me, in February of 2016, when that item went forward to the Board for approval, there is language within that item that requires districts of innovation requesting exemptions to the Board, that those waiver exemptions be granted from the State Board if the waiver is needed to support innovation, and if it does not violate federal regulations. As we worked through ESSA development, and as we worked alongside Corinth in the development of a potential model, moved through that path over time, ultimately, it was determined that it was not a viable solution to move forward with a different model, or a modified model, or an adjusted model, or whatever you'd like to refer to it as, to make this work. And that led us to the summer of 2018, when ultimately, that additional notification went to the district requiring the use of statewide assessments or MAP assessments.
Comments? Okay, thank you. What we'll do now is move into the Q and A discussion phase. Let's ask Dr. Childress to please come back, and then we'll direct our questions to him, and then we'll, if we have any follow-on with the Department, then we'll do it in that manner. So, Dr. Childress, thanks.
Steve, those three things that you had on the Board just a minute ago, the three things that must qualify.
High school assessment?
Must be able to scale up to the state's assessment. There was another one. Yeah, that's it right there. Just to leave those there. You can go on, Dr. Childress. I just want to study that.
Yeah, well, the purpose of him now is to answer any questions the Board might have directed towards Corinth.
Jeff, can I ask a question for clarification? When we entered into this innovative process with Corinth Gulfport and it was a couple of others sometime back, the legislature gave this Board the authority, and correct me if I'm wrong, to enter into this. Is that right? And I don't know who I'm asking the question to.
Originally, it was the Board's action. What came later was the piece of legislation that you're referring to around the districts of innovation.
What? And I'm asking these questions so I don't know how to-
Mr. McClellan, if you don't mind, the District of Innovation Law was in effect, and the State Board of Education adopted the policies and procedures that I referenced, I believe, at the September 2015 meeting, prior to us applying in November. So it was based on legislation that was passed in the 2015 Mississippi Legislature.
It wasn't against the law at that time, is that right?
I don't think it was against the law at the time, because when we applied, we knew what the ESA legislation was going to be. President Obama signed the ESA legislation in 2015. So, and you approved this in February 2016.
Right.
So the flexibility in the ESA law was already in place when you approved this waiver. There's also a general waiver in ESA that does allow you to waive any other, you know, any other general provisions of that law, and we believe that would give us the flexibility to ask for a waiver for elementary and middle schools.
Okay, I guess where I'm trying to get to, when did it get to be a real problem with the ESSA?
Once they started establishing the rules and regulations for implementation of the law. The law was one thing in December 15, and then working through all the implementation pieces of the law, that's when the state started getting information. Webinars were being held, meetings were being held. We were attending meetings to try to figure out exactly what parts of the law were changing, what was the implementation piece, and that's what we had to work through even before we drafted our ESA plan.
So we didn't, and that, we didn't get all of that complete until April, is that right? And again, I'm not trying to run any traps. I'm trying to get it clear in my mind.
State, as my understanding, submitted their ESA plan, I think, in September of 2017. Dr. Oakley can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's correct. And then approval was obtained that spring. The April 2018 date that I referenced in my presentation refers to something that was said at the State Board of Education meeting in November, in the November Board meeting when you approved our final accountability, unofficial accountability results. Dr. Vanderford said that the state made the decision in April of 2018 to not work with us any further. And that has been one of the issues that I have had, that has been an issue of contention. If the state made the decision in April of 2018, why did they not tell the Corinth School District until June, the last week of June, that they were not going to work with us, that they were not going to allow that, that they were going to hold us accountable solely on MAP? That was after school was out. That was after we had administered all of our Cambridge assessments, that was after we had administered all of our MAP assessments. It just put us in a very unfavorable situation because we had no knowledge that was going to be the case until after school was out and assessments had been given.
That gets me to my point. That clears that up with me. Because I had a problem with the time that it was done, but that pretty much clears up where I was driving.
Are there other specific questions on what Dr. Childress presented or the backup material? Okay?
I have a question. On the second bullet there, pilots include extensive quality criteria and safeguards such as alignment requirements. Are we saying that the Cambridge model does not align with our state requirements? Is that what we're saying?
Program is not aligned to our state standards, and that's one of the, so there's two pieces here. You're looking at one of the waiver pieces, the flexibility on the innovative assessment pilot. If you go back to, Nathan, can you flip back to the other one? This, we go to the first one, because this is the one, nope, back again, back again, back there. This is out of, this is actually out of the law. So the law says first that you have to have a single accountability system, that you've got to measure proficiency, et cetera, et cetera. It also says, and all those criteria are in our accountability model, but the very first thing it's got to do is align to our standards. That's been, that's in the ESA law. Then ESA went on to say, okay, for all of your statewide assessments, grade three through eight, and again in high school, you've got to meet all those criteria, and our assessment has to go through a peer review at the federal level. If you- If you flip to the next slide, which there, the two waivers, Nathan, can you just sit here and flip for me, please? Thank you. They gave us two options around high school assessment only, not three through eight. So they said if you choose to use ACT, SAT, or Cambridge at your high school, any high school that wants to use this, there's the criteria. Number one, it's got to be aligned to the state's standards, it's got to provide results that can be used in accountability, and it's got to meet all the technical requirements that apply to our assessments, and it's also got to go through a peer review. So that was for high school only. No wording in E S A at all is around three through eight. And then if you flip to the next one, the innovative assessment pilot is designed for states who want to scale that to the entire state. So if we were to apply for an innovative assessment with Cambridge, we would be telling the rest of the state of Mississippi, we intend to move toward the Cambridge assessment ultimately. And that, that's why Louisiana and New Hampshire were approved, because those two plans plan to scale to their entire state.
Dr. Dean, may I make a couple of comments on what Dr. Wright just said? It is exactly true in terms of the E S A flexibility, in terms of the innovative assessment pilot, that it, that is the purpose, to scale up to the state. That's not what we're asking for. We're not asking for anything under the innovative assessment pilot. What we are asking for goes back to the previous slide that we were talking about concerning the flexibility. And while Dr. Oakley did point out that we have talked about the fact that Cambridge might not precisely align, and that's the language that we have used at this point, we have not gotten, we feel confident that if we did the full alignment study and went through the process that has to be in place, according to E S A, that the state has to have, that we could show that what we are doing will align or exceed the state's standards in what we're doing in grades three through the high school area that are the subject area tested. That's what, that's what the law says you have to do, that the department is to set up those procedures to allow you to go through that process. And that's what we're asking for the department to work with us to do, where we can then get to that point to go to the U.S. Department of Ed to get approval, because that's the legwork that has to be done prior to going to the U.S. Department of Ed.
Mr. Chair, I don't want to, but Dr. Wright, from what I am getting, I can understand the alignment, and I'm told for that, but, but the timeframe is bothering me. So we didn't have an opportunity to know, to tell Corinth until April?
Like to your question. In April of two thousand and fifteen, I wrote a letter to the federal government, actually to Deb Delisle, who's the Assistant Secretary, and it, I asked for a waiver of using our statewide assessment system for Clarksdale, for Columbia, for Corinth, and for Gulfport. And I asked for that. She responded in June, and the answer was no. In fact, the wording is, we've received your request, and
In June of what now?
June of fifteen, and all four superintendents were sent an email to this effect, and the June of fifteenth email said, please make sure your school staff and students are aware that students must participate in the statewide English, Math, and Science assessments for grades three through eight, and again in high school. So that was in June of fifteen, and all superintendents were notified that you now had to take the statewide assessments. So we did not, and in working with the federal government, we did not, and we continue to work with the federal government to try to see if there was any wiggle room with that, but when E S A started promulgating all of their laws and rules and regulations, it became very clear to us that there was no wiggle room. Other states were being denied, and so that's what we sent, we actually notified him, I think via call or something, or a meeting, and then followed it up to codify the meeting with a letter letting him know that from this point forward, this is what we are going to have to do.
And that's at April?
That is, this was done in, in two thousand and eighteen.
Dr. Kelly, you have a specific question for Dr. Childress?
Yeah, it's a follow up to what was just explained. At the point, Dr. Childress said you got the notice from the state superintendent that you must use the state's assessment, what was your reaction to that? At that point, why did Corinth decide not to follow the guidance that she just talked about?
The memo that Dr. Wright is referencing was a, is a two thousand and fifteen memo that, based on a request the department made. That request was made under E S E A, not under E S A. That response was made at the time that Clarksdale, Gulfport, Corinth, and Columbia, and maybe Lamar County were in the excellence for all program. And that was an excellence for all issue. And we began to give the state assessments as that, we did what that memo said. We began to give the state assessments just as we have continued to give the state assessments. However, as Dr. Oakley pointed out, E S A, I mean, E S E A was replaced by E S A after that memo, okay? And so that is where we asked for this new flexibility based on E S A when we submitted our district of innovation plan that you approved in February of two thousand and sixteen. So that letter dealt with another purpose, with another specific issue, and we believe that what S, what E S A allows today allows us the flexibility that we need to do what we're asking for.
Okay, we have other specific questions for Dr. Childress? Ms. Franklin?
This is a little, I'd like to share something on my letter, but I'd like
If it's discussion, there's a period for discussion, we want to make sure we're doing Q and A. Yep, I'm sorry. Any other specific questions? Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Wright, go back to the, I think it was April of eighteen memo you sent out.
The request was sent to the federal government in April of fifteen in
Right, but the last, the last email or memo or something you read just?
That was, that was, that was the letter that was sent to Dr. Childress, letting him know that the statewide assessments would have to be administered.
And that was in what, when, tell me when that was?
In July of fifteen, and then in, I can't remember the date, it was in the spring of eighteen that we let him know that after working with the federal government, they were not going to waiver on a single accountability model. And then we followed that up in writing, and letting Dr. Childress know that we would be calculating his accountability results. It would be unofficial for this year, no sanctions involved, but letting him know from this point forward, we would be happy to be using our accountability model.
Any other specific questions for Dr. Childress? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll ask the department staff to please come, and also for our board, if they have specific questions for the department staff based on what's been presented to, there's really a period of clarification. You know, we've got to be very careful, we're not trending into new issues that are being brought up that aren't already in your backup material. So this is a point of clarification, and we'll have much more flexibility when we get into a discussion period among the board. So any clarifying, specific questions for the department staff?
Hate to keep bucking in, but let me ask a question. I'm assuming that the reason why you all didn't want to use the flexibility in E S A was based on the other states that was denied?
Certainly, looking at the landscape across the country has impacted kind of our perspective on this. As we've looked, Ed has consistently denied requests under that general flexibility waiver outside of either the high school assessment or the innovative component. There's a separate section of the law that allows for a state request, and that's that Virginia denial, as along with, along with some others that we've looked at, that have been consistent denials from the department because of that lack of alignment to the state's standards and a lack of a single assessment for all schools in the state.
Just for clarity, so in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, Corinth didn't get a grade, and that's because they were under E S E A, correct?
E S E A flex waivers were in place until the end of the sixteen, seventeen school year. While E S A passed in December of fifteen, the regulations and requirements did not go into place until the seventeen, eighteen school year.
And just to make a point of clarification, as been stated numerous times, the department did work with the district moving forward to develop this model. Now, I understand there's been leadership changes throughout the time, but the part that I've been involved in and made, I did attend a meeting in Corinth, but the model that the agency was working to develop, the previous staff that's, that's no longer here, was not, was never an in lieu of model, it was an in addition to, where we use the MAP assessments as well as the Cambridge's assessments, and it was described much like a second looked system. So the April twenty eighteen date that continues to come up was actually a technical advisory committee meeting with our TAC. And we presented to them basically a draft of what we believe that the model would look like that would comply with the flexibility that we have in E S A without one of these waivers, because it wasn't in, in lieu of model, it was in addition to. Then members of the TAC raised concerns that if we did this, that we were not, that we would be in conflict with federal statute as well as our state statute. So that's the time that we began to reconsider whether or not we could implement this. And then fast forward, you know, on through the next couple of months, we did our due diligence in asking questions to the federal government as to whether or not such a model would comply. And Alan and I asked those questions specifically at a national meeting, and then they responded, you know, to the email, said that you posed a question, we posed multiple questions to see how we might could work this, and then their response was that you could not. So once we had what, to me was a firm, and to Dr. Benton at the time, decision from the feds that there was no way that we could work with the district to make this happen, we then put that in writing to the district in June. So I just wanted to make those points of clarification from April to June.
Dr. Kelly?
I have one follow up question. It's really more for me and having me understand, and it may not be a question that can be answered, but can anybody tell me, why is it that the skills that are taught to prepare students for success through the Cambridge model, why don't those same skills prepare a student using the state assessment? What's so different about them that, that that same child that's using the Cambridge model wouldn't be successful when they test using our measurements? I'm not sure that can be answered, but it is a question that's going through my mind. Does the question make any sense?
The question does make sense, and it's, it's a similar question that we've, we've debated.
I have a question. We talk about the issuance of the score, but there's been a dichotomy of an official score and an unofficial score. So help me understand the impact of an unofficial score, what that means in the future?
Given that, given that Corinth had not received a grade in recent years, the grade wasn't awarded or given unofficially, the implication being that there would not be sanctions for funding or school improvement during this unofficial year of designation.
What responsibility legally do we have to publicize unofficial score? I know what E S A says around publicizing official scores, but do we have any flexibility to, you know, put an asterisk or, you know, describe, explain while we work on the solution?
E S A does not differentiate between official and unofficial.
So, okay, then, so E S A, what are the responsibilities of the department under E S A for publicizing scores, official or unofficial?
There's a single state and district report card that's required to be posted.
Those scores have already been reported, have they not? Yeah, they've already been published.
Yes, sir, but we've not officially took, taken up the Corinth grade, so I don't, I don't know what, on the official report, what we have for Corinth right now. This was not officially adopted.
The unofficial grade was adopted and was reported.
Okay, so we're through the appeal on that, so it's been reported. Got it. I got one, one, one follow on. So I think I'm following the avenues for the waiver along the use of Cambridge assessment, and I'm just, I don't know this to be fact, but in my mind, you have the MAP, and it applies for elementary, middle, and high school. Presumably, we would pursue some sort of waiver for Cambridge assessment, but it would strictly be for the high school, right? That's one question. So in the elementary, even if, even if we were successful in developing a specific LEA, LEA specific waiver for the Cambridge assessment, it would only be specific for the high school?
Under this section of the law, that would be
To be clear, so even still, MAP would still be required to be a part of the seven hundred point middle school, elementary school system, but the thousand point system, we could sub out the MAP for the theoretically Cambridge approved alternative assessment?
At the high school, under this section. As I referenced earlier, I think it's eighty four oh one is a section of the law that speaks to just a general waiver from regulations under E S A. That's the one that we've looked at that have had multiple denials from Department of Ed, where they were looking for even broader flexibility than this.
What's the timeline for requesting waivers? Is there a window? Is it rolling? In other words, we go to the department tomorrow and say, we're requesting a waiver, and we, we will figure out a way to fund it, which is a separate issue, on, you know, Cambridge being peer reviewed, and identify it as an acceptable assessment alternative to MAP for a particular LEA at the high school level, very specific on that. Is there a timeline?
Not seen a set timeline. I've seen districts that have submitted and received responses from Ed just over, over the year.
Other questions for Ms. Franklin?
Yes, sir.
Has the department ever made the statement that E S A allows flexibility, but we would prefer not to have to resubmit our plan?
I've not, no, I've not made that statement.
Did the TAC have any influence on the decision? I think I heard you say that the TAC said that to all the federal stuff and all, that our technical advisory committee, did they influence the decision not to go on?
Offer a waiver?
Or? Or whatever.
How did you do? I think all TAC did was confirm it.
I thought I heard you say that TAC, in talking with the TAC folks, they said
TAC did say, yeah, I mean, with all the different scenarios that we provided to the TAC, all members of the TAC said you need to give strong consideration to moving forward with this, because you will not be in compliance with, with federal law if you do this.
Looking at the timeline that's in our backup material here.
What, what are you looking at, is what she's asking?
Only, this is in April two thousand and eighteen, you know, we've talked about April dates.
So who's, there's multiple timelines in the backup, so which?
Corinth, this is Corinth's backup material. What it says, it said, "The Department of Ed Technical Advisory Committee met in Jackson according to Dr. Paula Vanderford via two thousand and eighteen, June two thousand and eighteen telephone call. A proposed accountability model was presented to the TAC for their review. The TAC indicated it was not their role to tell an agency what they could or could not do in terms of policy."
So that timeline was developed by the district? That, this is in Corinth's backup material, that timeline was developed by Corinth School District?
Not into some of these, the other appeals, but I've got, well, you know, you said when we get to discussion.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, so I spoke out of turn a little bit earlier when I said we'd have discussion, then a vote on the motion. What I think I will do is kind of describe the one or two motions that can be made, then we'll move to discussion and then vote. That seems to be a logical progression. So if you, you know, look at the, the motion would be either, under the Office of Chief Accountability Officer, a motion to either affirm the commission's recommendations as it relates to Corinth, that's one motion, separate from that would be, or to deny Separate from that would be, or to deny. There should be a motion, and then a discussion on that motion. So, the affirmation would be to uphold the CSA's finding in a discussion on that, or deny it in a discussion on that.
Affirm the recommendation.
Yes, I recommend. Uphold the IRB's original finding of denial of their appeal. If you, if you're affirming what the Commission on School Accreditation said, will be upholding, or essentially denying the Corinth appeal, and vice versa for denial. So, there needs to be a motion so that we can go into discussion. Can we restate it? Okay, so the motion is to affirm the Commission on School Accreditation accountability appeal, which was to deny their appeal. Now, we can go into discussion.
That would be denying the appeal.
That would be affirming the CSA's decision, therefore denying the Corinth appeal. Yes, I do need a second on the motion. Okay, now we're in discussion. Yes.
Paragraph out of a letter that was sent out on November the 13th in 2018, and the letter is from the Assistant Secretary Brogan regarding ESA State Plan Amendment Process. And what it says, it says, "We appreciate the work you and your team have done in developing a consolidated state plan that meets the requirements of the ESEA while also representing the needs of your district schools and state schools. The U.S. Department of Education expects that each state will revise and strengthen its consolidated state plan as appropriate to better address the educational needs of children in the state. Prior to implementing any revisions to its approved consolidated state plan, a state must submit its proposed amendments to the department for review and approval."
That letter, to whom was that letter addressed?
As to State Board of Education leaders, and it was, oh, excuse me, the specific was to the chief state school office. And it was dated November the 13th, 2018. And I think what, back to the question, you know, does ESA provide flexibility? Yes, it's not just a simple thing, but they do provide flexibility, but you have to ask and you have to go through a process. But they do provide that, and...
I think Dr. Chil, pardon me for interrupting, but I think Dr. Childers pointed that out, that he was willing, correct me if I'm wrong, to go through that process to try to get Corinth in compliance, but to this point, that hasn't happened, and that could actually, and I don't want to put in time, but I mean, it could be done in a few months, or it could take a couple of years for it to get through the whole process, so, but what we're dealing with is the here and now. Am I right about that? I mean, somebody tell me if I'm right or wrong, I mean. Right. Yeah.
That's really the vote before the board today.
Right, but I guess, sort of what Mr. Franklin is saying, going forward, we vote today to affirm or deny, and then going forward, Corinth still has the opportunity to develop a plan, and we'll try to work it through the process to get some type of alternate assessment approved, or get Cambridge assessment aligned and approved.
For their high schools, under the high school assessment.
Yes, for the high school only, yes. Is that the right thinking? I'm just wanting to make, I need affirmation here to see if I'm thinking correctly.
I don't think it denies any future effort toward that. I think the future is still open to those efforts, but I think the here and now is what the vote on is.
I'm off track, and that's fine. What keeps going through my mind is, I haven't heard Mr. Childers tell us why Corinth could not change their assessment in the future to be consistent with all the other schools in the state. I mean, I haven't heard it addressed, why they can't change in the future. I mean, I know we aren't going to change this year, but I'm just asking. Keep talking about MDE making a change, well, the issue's on the other foot now, why don't they consider? I've not heard it addressed.
Out of objection, I'd ask Dr. Childers if you want to address that or not, it's your option. Yeah, it's just, please, come in.
We have continued to give MAP as required. As I said in my presentation, we made a conscious decision based on what we saw take place in the Excellence for All program, to begin to implement the Cambridge International Curriculum in kindergarten through 12th grade in our school district. And that was one of the centerpieces of our District of Innovation Plan, which that was the whole purpose of a District of Innovation Plan, to let districts try to do things differently. And so, that's why we have chosen to do that. That's why we ask to take advantage of the flexibility in ESA, and that's what we want to do, because it's what we believe is right for the children of our community. And that's what seems, we seem to have lost the focus on in all of these conversations, is we've lost the focus on the students, and we've lost the focus on the children.
And I'm sorry to cut you off, just keep the answers to the questions asked, so thank you, sir. Other discussion among the board? Okay, not here in discussion, the motion is to affirm the commission's finding, which was to deny the Corinth appeal. There's been a motion with a second and discussion, so all in favor of affirming the CSA's decision to deny?
Can I, I'm sorry. I apologize, I know I didn't hear the whole thing, but I just want to reconfirm, once we vote, the Corinth School District can still have, go through the appeal process through, this is the end, for this year?
This year for the, for the state policy of appeals.
This is it, okay. I just wanted to confirm.
Okay, so I'm going to restate the motion, because, you know, it's complex. If you have any questions, please ask, but the motion is for the board to affirm the Commission on School Accreditation's decision to deny the Corinth appeal. There's been a motion, a second, and discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the ayes appear to have it. So, we will move on then to item B, which affects, let's see, I'm out of, Harrison County. So, I'll ask the department staff to come and make a presentation, and I know that we're talking about these separately, so if you can, you know, if there's common information for both of them, just present them at one time, at the same time, but you don't have to say the same thing twice if it's the same thing.
Thank you. So, just to recap, nothing new here, just a reminder, there are no exclusions in state law regarding the assignment of grades to schools with special populations or to districts and schools of innovation. As I shared earlier, we use the MAP assessment, and with the overwhelming majority of our students in the state, MAP A is specifically designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities, students such as the ones that are served, identified and served through both of these campuses on the Gulf Coast. MAP A is designed to administer to those individual students. It is not a test that students would try to sit down at a computer and take. It's a very interactive assessment design, where the teacher works in a small group, one-on-one with the student, and a proctor there to help score, and they co-score for reliability in this test. Again, there is not flexibility under, he has to say, or state law to exclude these schools. All students must be assessed, and all students means students in all schools must be assessed, and they must be administered a test in accordance with that single statewide accountability system that measures academic proficiency on state assessments. This is a matter of compliance with state and federal law, and it's a matter of ensuring that we have some accountability in those schools, even the ones that serve our most needy students across the state. So, I'll yield back the balance of time to you as board.
Okay, if there's not any comments from you, Mr. Gill, hello, sir, with the same rules we use with Corinth, you'll have 10 minutes to kind of explain your point, and then we'll ask the staff to come back.
Thank you, Dr. Dean, and thank you, Dr. Wright, and board members. I come before you today to discuss the issues of the Child Development Center that very few of us have any knowledge about, including the department, who contacted me briefly and wanted to know, Roy, tell me what School 20 is shortly before accountability results came out. So, I have to call reference to state law that was in, that was put in law in 1968 that establishes this center on the Gulf Coast, and it's very explicit, and for those of us who are, like to look at the law, we need to make sure that we look it up, and it specifically states, these students who are unable to attend public school, very specific in the language of the law, that established this in 1968. So, therefore, we talk, we've heard a lot about law today, what's required by law, what's required by this. Harrison County School District Child Development Center represents the entire county, students from the Harrison County School District, the Gulfport School District, the Long Beach School District, and the Biloxi School District. We serve only as the physical agent, they are a center within itself. Roughly according to state statute, it says that all, it says there's no provisions for exemptions. The state statute is very clear when it says that all schools will be given a grade according to the policies and procedures outlined by the department under the accountability. One is to only check under the accountability, Section 3.1.1, that states, in order for a school to receive a score, they must have a minimum in-count of 10 students per component. And I just found out last week that we were under the 700-component model, which there are seven components, and 700, and each of the 700 components have, is for the elementary. Well, this site does house 12th-grade students, but under the 700-component model, the seven components, you're supposed to have a minimum of 10. It doesn't. Section, the policy that we had to make, and we go by it, was revised last year, where it says that we go back three years if a school does not meet the minimum in-count of 10 students. Yes, you will know, those of you who know, I'm all about standards, I'm all about Mississippi, and I'm all about high expectations, and I want to applaud you on the job that you do, and Dr. Wright, for moving Mississippi and Mississippi schools, because we have done a great job. But, to label this center with a zero total points, zero of all 700, zero F, to me, is criminal in the face of what goes on in this center, because, yes, there are those interpretations of the law. The law is very clear on establishing this center. The law is clear with what we have to do to meet the minimum in-count, none of which the minimum in-count never was come to. Had to have 10, none of the components. To continue this, we cannot, you cannot fathom, to looking at the alternate assessment of MAP A, which is, yes, under the requirement back in 2015, when we were sent the memo that all students were tested, we did give the MAP A the alternate assessment for those students with significant cognitive disabilities. But these students that are specifically unable to attend public school will never be proficient, and two of the components require proficiency. So, to continue with a label, you are making sure that this school will continue to get zero points, and those students, those teachers, those families do not deserve to have this type of accountability rating. Just like anything with an asterisk or a comment unofficial, you put an F out there, that's saying, that's not good. And the care that these students, these teachers give to these students is phenomenal, and I encourage you, I would like to volunteer, I know it's not within the parameters of the requirement of the school visit, but I challenge each and every one of you to come to this center and visit. I will personally give you a guided tour. I come before you to uphold the work the commission did last week, and to grant our appeal, and to go in forward that this center not be given a grade classification. Thank you for your time and your efforts.
Sir, ask the department to come and make any remarks.
Draw your attention, as we've shared, back to the requirements under ESSA and under state law that across the state receive a, be included in that grade calculation. The business rules did receive an update through APA board action back in the summer to include special schools such as this, such as the school in Pasgulla and School for Blind and Deaf in that calculation. We also know that as we look across the state, there are other districts that are currently serving students within their school setting, and in fact, it came out through the CSA meeting last week, that a superintendent who said one of the best things we ever did for the students that had been pulled out of our school district into a separate setting was to serve them on that school campus, where they had some interaction with other students, they had some stimulation from other students, from the adults, and from the activity in the school, and so I'll turn this over to Paula and Alan for some additional information.
So, did you want to follow up on the in-count, Mike, question?
So, this question did come up in the commission meeting as well about the in-count, and I just wanted to speak to that. We had to change the business rules this past year in order to accommodate schools without a minimum in-count of 10, of course, with the intent of assigning grades to all schools, which was the goal here. So, we went back and added that any school that doesn't meet the minimum in-count of 10, that we would go back three years to pull data for students to test, and add those three years up in order to get to a minimum in-count of 10. We were not able to do that for this school, we got to an in-count of eight. So, business rules didn't really address, what do we do if we don't get an in-count of 10 after we go back three years? But, so we did the performance measure using what we had over the course of three years, which was eight, a count of eight students tested. We had some other concerns in looking at the data, you know, about enrollment, a large proportion of enrollment in the school is enrolled in pre-kindergarten, so they're not necessarily would be assigned to assessed grades. Looking at peer age, which is typically when ungraded students are, ungraded students are tested based on peer age, looking at peer age of their enrollment, we... are tested based on peer age, looking at peer age of their enrollment, we said that, were found that there should have been 18 students that were assessed. Obviously, we didn't have that since we only had three, eight is the in-count for the three years. But again, the other side of that is, when we're looking at accountability measures, it's not a sample of the population, it's, it's a consensus, or a census, I should say. So when we had eight students, that's what, that was what the data that we had, and we used the data that we had that was added up over three years.
You have remaining about six minutes. Are you done? Okay. All right, so we will take these individually and a discussion phase now with specific Q&amp;A. We'll kind of wrap that all together. If you have them for either Mr. Gill or for the staff around this issue. Let me just kind of say a few things. So this is kind of a complex issue because in, in ways it's related to the Corrent matter, but in other ways, it's fundamentally different. When I think about this challenge, and I think about the, the challenge of board members, it's, you know, we're, we're challenged to identify what the problems are and try and come up with solutions. And what's at play here is clearly the section of the code that says every school and district shall receive a grade. I had a conversation with several legislators about the spirit and the intent of the law. And clearly, what you have, not only, you know, with these two schools on the coast, but maybe others, the, the spirit and intent of the law is not really, excuse me, the spirit of law is not the same as the intent of the law. And from my discussions with our staff here at the department, as well as legislators, I think there's a fix here. I think it's a fix because for schools that are educating 100% special needs, severe profound mental retardation, I don't think the intent or the spirit of the law would be to say, let's give them a grade, whether it's MAP, MAP-A, whatever assessment that's being used, and let's publicize that because that's what ESA requires us to do. So I have asked Pete to work to get a bill dropped, which, the deadline was yesterday, and I'm told that the bill has been requested with, with the deadline for a bill number to be assigned by Friday, that says, you know, if you're a child development center to the section of the code that you quoted that from 1968, this, you're exempted from this part of the law because that's not the spirit nor the intent for, again, schools that are teaching, you know, severe profound mental retardation, 100% special need. Now, just keep in mind, ESA requires that those schools or those students at the child development centers continue to be assessed, and we, as a department, have a duty to continue to monitor process standards and accountability around those, and, and I would assume, getting ahead here, but that those individual students that are in the centers then will be tied back to the districts from which they came for, for the assessment process. That's going to be determined because the law requires them to be assessed and them to be assigned to some, you know, entity. If it's not the school, it's got to be, if it's not the, the child development centers, it has to be the school. We'll, we'll figure that out. So I've requested a bill to be drafted, and it would be my hope that the legislature would take it up and act on it immediately as a, you know, in effect upon passage and signed by the governor, not July 1. But we don't know, and there is no guarantee that this will, you know, happen through legislative process, or could be other ways to address it. But I want you to know, I mean, just, we, we think about this, and we think about the spirit and the intent and the impact, and I will just tell you once again, I'll choose my words carefully. Let me just say, nobody in the state of Mississippi intentionally wants these schools who are doing amazing work for, for children in need to, to be assessed and then to publicly be, you know, told, hey, compared to, you know, other students, you're a failure. That's, we got to fix that. So I will just say, now we, we should open it into discussion without talking to the board. I asked Pete, because of the time of the, of the build deadline, which was yesterday, of asking to, to draft some language, don't know that that's the solution, but I think in this case, it's a little fundamentally different than Corrent, that there is potentially a, a solution. So with that being said, I will open it up for discussion. Questions?
I was going to ask, is this a period where we can ask any questions?
Sir.
Nathan mentioned that the in-count was not 10, never read, never reached in-count threshold. In fact, I think it was said that the in-count was eight over a three-year period. Is that correct? My question is, the lack of meeting the threshold of 10, how would that impact the validity, if you will, of the assessment, and what comes out of the assessment?
Well, I am not a psychometrician, I'd be very clear about that upfront. The in-count does impact the sensitivity of the data that you get from an accountability model. Our in-count in the state has been 10 for a number of years now. There are some states that do have an in-count of one, and so they, their stance on this is we're going to take into account accountability for every single student. If there's an in-count of one within a school, they consider that. And other states have an in-count of as high as 20 or 30.
Ma'am.
A question I asked you earlier today, which is going to answer that I think is very valid. These students' scores still are reflected in the state's total assessment because their score from the special schools goes back and is added into the measurement of the school district from which they came. Is that right?
I think that would be the outcome, that because they're no longer considered a school --
Right.
-- have to be accounted for back at the district.
So they're not just being, I don't mean that, they're ignored really, but, you know, their, their scores still are part of the accountability system, they just appear in a different way, different district.
Assuming that they, they are then identified back to the school, yes, they are part of that school's accountability measurements.
If, if we did that. Currently, that is not what it's --
Right.
Right. But if we go back to this being --
Notionally.
Yep, yep. Out of school, it's not as if they just disappear.
Right. We would have to send the scores back to the respective districts.
And I would just say, as we move forward, just to make it very clear, I'm asking Dr. Wright and, and the state, as this conversation presumably develops, to please keep us informed about what the outcome would look like, and obviously, when the time's right, we would make sure that we are in fact following that federal law. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, for accounting purposes, yes.
Every school gets assigned a number?
Assigned a number.
It's all funded, pretty much. There's a small amount that they do get from ADA, from MAAEP, yes.
All schools get assigned a number?
Yes.
I mean, yeah, we do that.
Yes, in other words, through accreditation, they, the --
That's what, what I'm wanting to look into, but I just want to be very clear, this is very important. These students will still be assessed by the MAP-A. They will still have some connection into an accountability model somewhere, presumably their home district. There will still need to be Department of Education oversight into the process standards of those, those schools. So somebody needs to make sure, you know, the law's being followed. The only exception is, in this code section that says every school in which we've designated School 20, a school, goes away because they're no longer meeting the definition of what a school is, the child, child development center. That's the intent. Yes, ma'am?
Going back to where we currently stand on this, this not somewhat akin to the current situation in that as of today, whatever today is, January 17th or whatever, the law says that every school shall be assigned a, and if we consider School 20 a school, and in the meantime, we've either got to get the law changed. So is it not that, I'm asking for my own clarification, that what we're dealing with now is what the law says today?
That's why I was qualifying the opening comments by saying, it's, it's easy to, to think of this as the same issue because it's the same section of the code. I guess I failed to make it, you know, crystal clear that this, this discussion is about schools that are currently codified as schools that are teaching severe profound --
Right, right.
-- mental, 100% special need, and for them to, they still have to get the grade, but for that, those schools to be, you know, publicized, which is what the law says we have to do as Fs, seems to be not within the spirit nor the intent of the law.
Oh, well, I think we all agree on that.
But that's different, but that's different than Corrent, you know, or other districts of innovation.
I'm just thinking about what the law, how their law applies.
How that Mr. Gill referenced only applies to the schools on the coast. So it's, that's a very specific part of that law that was passed in 1968.
2391.
Very specific to the coast.
Mr. Bailey?
Are there any inconsistencies that, that happen for districts that don't have one of these schools, and then those students do attend the schools in, in that district, and MAP-A applies to those individual schools in the district? So is it advantageous, and, and again, I'm, I'm asking because I'm not familiar with this, to have a exceptional school, and then that pulls those out of your local schools in the district, and therefore, they don't get that grade under MAP-A or whatever? So just a question to say, are there any inconsistencies, or would it be within a district's view, would they want to establish one of those schools, to pull those out of the, the schools? So when, Ms. Gill, when you say unable to attend, they all SCDs?
Oh, yes.
So they're, but still all take, all SCDs and all take --
And are so medically fragile that they can't attend. We have many SCD students in our regular schools. In other words, and there was a, a notation about a lot of preschools and, and the question about that, that center serves six months to 21-year-olds. The objective at this center is to prepare, even if they're SCD, that they're able to function as much as possible in the regular setting. So when you look at the, the numbers, there are more preschool than are in grades three and above, because only those students who are too medically fragile to attend a public school remain at this center in hospital beds, on IVs.
So you do have severe profound --
Oh, yes.
-- already in your schools, and these are outside the bounds of that.
These are outside, that would typically wind up in some type of residential treatment somewhere other than a school, and those residential facilities are not call schools. But in, in this center, it takes those students that would not be placed in a center here at this, at, at this facility. And it's actually located, even though it's under the jurisdiction of the county school districts, the building itself is located in the Gulfport School District, and it's been there, like I said, the law, it was built, established in 1968, so it's been there for many years.
Point, point of conversation, that answered my question, point of conversation that, to me, is unable to attend, if they're at such a low functioning area that they cannot come to, to, to another school setting and have to be served in that setting, then that, that sheds a little different light on it for me.
Okay, so the issue at hand is that the, the commission on school accreditation took a position to, let me say this the right way. So the Harrison County School appealed to the commission to deny the grade that was officially given to them, and the commission affirmed that, you understand? So the, the commission, separate from the Corrent issue, made a determination that in fact, they shouldn't receive the grade. Just to, for the record, that's contrary to the law, the current law, okay? So they said, even though it's a school, the law says, she was a school, the commission voted to affirm their appeal, and so the question before us now is related to the commission, is to affirm or deny the commission's position as it relates to these schools, given also the fact that we're working for a solution sooner rather than later, but that's abstract because we don't know how that's going to impact. Dr. Kelly?
Question, the legislators in session now, they meet --
April 7.
But what would be wrong with deferring any decision on this today to see what happens in the legislature and come back and make a decision after the legislature has acted or not acted?
I might ask the attorney to weigh in. I know that we are required through ESA to make reports on the official or unofficial grades, and I think it's also the publication issue. By deferring it, we're deferring the, the appeal to affirm or deny the commission's accreditation. That's, that's what's at issue. I don't know how it impacts the ESA reporting requirements, but, you know, by, now I'm going to ask you, I mean, by deferring by one month, I, I would say instead of the end of the legislative session, the intent would be for them to act on this.
But until they act on it.
Yes, sir.
They may act on it two weeks from now.
Correct.
Until they act on it.
All I know is that you're required to make an annual report. I don't, I have to confess that I don't know what the particular deadline is on that, but what you're anticipating, though, is that somehow the legislature is going to retroactively undo what state law's already required to be done. And, you know, I, I guess I'm not in a position to, to judge on their ability to do that, but I would, I would think that that would not occur. What they would probably do is craft a solution for the future, and so as Ms. Altman said, you've got to deal with the here and now.
There, there is, I'm, I'm going to read the suggested language, this is not that relevant, but it's important for the question, and I'll also remind you that there is the potential for this to be fixed or decided outside of the, the legislature, simply by acknowledging that these are not schools, by coding them, but child development centers. That's, that's an alternative, too, that has to be figured out. But the language says, you know, all schools, A, B, C, D, F, except for facilities designated as child development centered in accordance with section 372391, and it would go into effect immediately upon passage and sign by the governor.
Well, the intent of the bill that you're proposing would fix the here and now, not the future.
Correct, because it would take in effect immediately, and so then we can go back and hear the question from the commission again under the new law of the state and vote to affirm or deny it based on the law. Because right now, the commission's finding is against what the law says, every school.
I, I would just point out, I think that even with that language, it's going to be effective upon a passage, isn't going to be retroactive to something that's already taken place.
That was my question is, I mean, if they pass it Monday, and it becomes effective Monday, we still have everything up until Monday that we have to deal with theoretically.
Then we hear the question after the passage is signed at the next board meeting under the new law. Now, to me, I think this is probably not the best way to solve it, because I think there is a way to solve it without opening the code section, where we can designate those schools as child development centers and not schools, and then follow, we'll be following the law at that point. So.
Mr. Chair, I think we all will agree that the discussion that we are having, I don't think anybody within their heart really wants to see those kids have to go through what these regular kids are going through. Point to Dr. Kelly, I can understand the referral, but if we confirm what the commission have already decided, it would do wonders for those people and their parents down there. And I don't think, to be honest with you, I don't think anybody around this table would want to see those kids having to go through what the regular kids have to go through. So I would like to see a motion to just confirm, and let's move forward. Can I make that motion?
Make the motion, it requires a second and then more discussion. Make the motion, it requires a second and then more discussion. So the motion would be to affirm the commission's acceptance of the school districts. Harrison County specifically appealed to their official letter grade of being an F. So it would simply be, the grade would then be, I don't know what the grade would be. It would just be no grade. Okay? So that's the motion.
Unofficial grade right now, as I recall, with no sanctions.
Second.
Question around that particular motion, yes, ma'am?
So my question is, how does that, if we were to do that, how is that going to affect the law that is in place?
Violation of the law. And we've all taken an oath to uphold the law whether we like it or not.
That's why I'm trying to fix the law.
Yeah.
I know, but that's what I'm saying, I guess moving forward, then we're all in violation of doing what the law says, correct?
It'll get the law changed, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair. But we're doing the right thing. Whether or not you'd be in violation of the law would be dependent upon your vote.
Depending upon the what?
On how you voted.
Individually.
Right. You got it. Yes, sir. Okay. Other discussion, yes, sir.
I think Mr. McClellan framed it perfectly. But I would, I would like to offer a substitute motion that speaks to the question that I asked a minute ago is to defer this until the legislature has met and acted on this item and come back at the next meeting after they have acted and have this board act on this item at that time. And that would take a withdrawal of Mr. McClellan's motion, I know. But I'm just pleading with Mr. McClellan to work with me a little bit.
My heart goes out to those people. Just work with me a little bit. You're right, my heart goes out to those people. So we all around this table know, we know what we are doing here. And to me, it's sitting in the right method. It's hard for me to withdraw that motion, Dr. Kelly.
Well, then, are you putting that, oh, excuse me, joy.
There's a motion and a second. There's been discussion on the motion to uphold the commission's finding without hearing further discussion. All in favor of Mr. McClellan's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion failed. Are there other motions?
Wait, wait, now, the motion failed? Do we have a roll call vote?
The motion is to affirm the commission's recommendations to uphold the appeal of Harrison School District as regards to these special schools. That's the motion. There's been seconded discussion, and there's been a roll call request, which is granted Mr. Suggs on the motion to uphold the commission's findings to grant the appeal of the Harrison County School District.
Aye. Aye.
All right. So again, motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Chairman, if I'm in order, I'd like to offer a motion that this board defer action on the Harrison County Special School until such time as the legislature has acted on this item. And that's the next meeting, this board take it up for consideration.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, see a none, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'm going to put Mr. Rodolffich a little bit on the line here. I know you've got a board meeting to get down to, and Pascagoula is good drive from here. Is there any discussion or any additional comments you'd like to address the board? Because I don't want to keep you past lunch. Well, with respect, guys, please give Mr. Rodolffich just some time to address the board because I don't want to keep him past lunch. And when he's done, we'll break for lunch. And Mr. Rodolffich will be on his way back to lovely Jackson County.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you providing the Pascual-Gochay School District an opportunity to speak here today. And please that all, know that all of my comments will be with all due respect because I believe many of you echo our sentiments as it relates to our children. As a point of reference, I have spent my entire career and attended school in Jackson County. That's 26 years of being a schoolperson and 12 years of being a student there. I've also received all four of my degrees in the state of Mississippi, and I will be receiving a fifth degree in the state of Mississippi, all from Mississippi institutions. I'm one of those kids who went to Delta State University, which you all knew was a teacher's college, and received three degrees there because I love Mississippi. I want us to be great at everything that we do. But Ella Willa Wilcox said, "To send by silence when we should protest makes cowards of all men." And I know that we have constantly referenced state law and federal law during the course of these discussions. And I would say to you, if you look around this room, how much different would this room look if there weren't people who had the courage to challenge state law and federal law? I think it's very important that we know, and I am a product of a school system that has challenged state law and has prevailed in the Supreme Court on multiple occasions. We have also challenged the law and authority locally, and we have prevailed in that sense as well. So when we talk about, is it possible to make changes? Absolutely. And I've talked to Dr. Dean about a legislative solution as it relates to this and spoke to the chairman of education. And I'm hopeful that we can come to some type of conclusion here that's beneficial to all parties. First of all, I want to talk to you just a little bit about these children. Because I've heard testimony from MDE about the abilities of the children who attend there and that they're given a test written by Mississippi teachers and all that. Folks, I have a two-year-old son at my house. I actually have four children under the age of seven at my house. And if you use a calculator, I have a lot of little kids that I'm raising, that I'm their father. And I'm very well aware of their developmental capabilities at their age. When you look at the children who attend our exceptional school in Jackson County, a typical student has an IQ range of 15 to 25. Now, you think about that for a minute. When you start talking about the condition, cognitive condition that these children are functioning from. Their adaptive score is less than 50. Their communication age equivalent is 10 months. So we're talking about giving accommodations to children. You're dealing with a 10-month-old. I have a two-year-old that I couldn't get to sit still for more than five minutes. And these are the children that we're saying we need to give an alternate assessment to, a MAPA. Their five motor skills are 10 to 18 months. Their gross motor skills are 10 to 18 months. That is one measure for those students. These students physically, so you get an understanding because we do have mainstream students in our school district. We're one of the most diverse districts in the state of Mississippi. And we do have students who are located on all of our campuses there. But on this specific campus, and we take care of the children from Moss Point, Jackson County, Pascagoula, and Gochay on one center. And when we talk about the possibility of, you know, there being an idea of breaking these schools up and sending the kids back. Well, on this specific campus, they have water therapy. They have a grocery store. They have a exercise room. They have an adaptive PE teacher. They have an air-conditioned gym. They're playing unified basketball tonight in Pascagoula. So there are a lot of accommodations that we have and trainable things that we're working with our kids. And it's sensory rooms. The other part of that is the number of students and other educators, including our new teacher academy, who goes and works with these children to get a better understanding of the situation that these children and their families find themselves in. When you look from brigands, which is how we look at the age of these kids, their literacy ability range is zero to one years old. Their mathematics ability range is zero to one year old. And their communication range is zero to 10 months old. And we're asking these students to sit and take a test. Regardless of how we frame the accountability model in the state of Mississippi, in this specific case, and you heard this if you listened to my last speech that I was here, that I don't believe that you can punitively, publicly humiliate children that are exceptional with a letter grade to improve performance. You can't do that to them, nor can you do that to their teachers, nor can you do that to their district. And the point I made during the course of that meeting was that I have four A schools, I have nine B schools, and I have three C schools. We've been a B district, and we're always above the state, national average, and graduation rate. I wouldn't trade any of those schools for those children who are labeled an F in that school. I wouldn't give it up because we voluntarily accept that responsibility. I have my principal of the year here, who is part of a team that has upgraded everything there. And for us to upgrade anything, that is a county-owned building. And we receive up to a half mil to operate that building from the county. But we have all, as districts, combined resources to create these great opportunities for our kids through volunteer efforts. I was asked to present, what are solutions? How do we solve it? ESA's given states power to look at practices and create practice for their students. And this is in your notes. Alternative and more appropriate alternate assessment that addresses students who have been identified as SCD at this developmental range. Because right now, it's trainability and survivability for some of these children who have feeding tubes, who have to have diapers changed at 18 years old, who have just about all the bathroom assistance, who have very low cognitive ability. And what we're trying to do is help these children to be able to function because their next step is to go to another assisted living space or to go back home with their parents. Second is create an alternative rating system, which I think you're trying to accomplish for the small number of specialized facilities throughout the state. And my third one would be the legislative opportunity that we have there through the Mississippi Department of Education lobby the Mississippi Legislature to create a law that helps us with that. With that being said, we presented some information. I want to just make sure I have it on the record that in the state of Texas, there was a school there that was rated an F. There was an appeal to the, and it was from the Austin Independent School District. There was an appeal that the state of Texas granted through their Texas Education Agency. They saw the issue with giving and assigning grades to students that are in this condition. In the state of Florida, it was written in to the law about not testing these children with these disabilities, which is also part of your record. You know, I'm one of the fortunate people. And if we talk about cohorts for just a moment, we have to think about, again, the intent of where we're going. Because in order to create a cohort for this group of students, you have to manufacture the cohort by going back three years. And I don't think that that is beneficial to the school or the kids based on the type of work that we're doing with the kids at that school level. I also would like to try to validate my position. I've been a superintendent in the Pascual-Gochay School District. This is my 14th year. I've been a nationally, had a nationally recognized Blue River High School. And we have great success with a very diverse population, one of the largest EL populations in the state of Mississippi. We take pride in making sure that every child has a voice in our school district. And today I'm here because they can't be able to represent their voice. I'm their voice, I'm their advocate for them. And I have other advocates here with me to make sure that these children receive the best of everything. So, gosh, it's hard to say, not Jason, because of our relationship all the way back to the street.
I was just going to say, thanks, Wayne.
But, you know, but Dr. Dean, Dr. Wright, we appreciate you providing us the opportunity to come before this group. And I appreciate the request for the legislature to correct this issue. And thank you for your time. I appreciate you letting me speak here.
Thank you for what you're doing for the boys and girls of Pascagoula and the Gulf Coast and your service to the state. I remember the day that you took over for Hank. That was, I can't believe it's been that long ago.
Twenty-nine days later, Hurricane Katrina hit.
Yep, I know, welcome to being the superintendent.
Twenty-seven million in damage with a $1 million flood insurance policy. It was great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just one piece of administrative business, and then we'll cut to lunch. I think since we've said that we're going to take these individually, we need to take that same motion that you made, specific to Harrison, and apply it. So I would assume that's the motion. Is there a second? Okay, no discussion, not hearing any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we're done, we'll reset. Okay, one note. Okay, we're going to recess until 1:00.
You're going on the same motion that he made for?
Motion carries. So there's two motions. The first one's on Harrison, and we just need to do Pascagoula separately. So it was the same motion, motion carries. How we will recess for lunch until 1:15 and take up the rest of our?
We're on number one here?
We're on number two. Let the record reflect, we made it to number two. It gets easier. It gets easier.
I will call our meeting back to order. We're on item two for information report of the 2019 graduation rates for the state district and school levels. Dr. Vanderford?
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon. Item number two is an information item, and it's the report of the 2019 graduation rates for the state district and school levels. Alan is going to walk us through a brief PowerPoint presentation that summarizes the information that was provided to you as backup material for this item.
Hey, thank you. I'm pleased to present our newest graduation rates. This would be the students who graduated this past spring and started in this cohort in 2014, 2014-15 school year. Again, this follows with the vision and mission of the department, making sure that students, all students are successful and ready for college and career. So, in accordance with state and federal regulation, we calculated the four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, as I said, based on those who entered the cohort in 2014, 2015. At the end of the four-year window, which closes each year July 31st, we have final status. We look at the final status of all students in the cohort. These are the different statuses that a student can have. Obviously, we're looking at or reporting graduation rate, we're looking at students who receive a traditional diploma within four years. We have students that are dropout, who don't complete. We have students that are in other completers, so students who receive a certificate or something other than a traditional diploma. Students that return in their fifth year are considered still enrolled. And then, students are eligible to be removed from the cohort during the four-year window if they transfer out of state to another school. It could be to a private school that culminates in the award of a traditional high school diploma, or to homeschool. Those are removed from the cohort calculation. So, I'm pleased to say that this year we have a graduation rate of eighty-four percent for the state. It's the highest we have seen. This was the last reported graduation, national graduation rate of eighty-four percent. And our state dropout rate continues to drop. We're down to ten point one percent of students this year. We report the graduation rates by subgroup, and in this table we see the graduation rate reported for each subgroup that we report on. We have some additional subgroups that we report on under ESSA, and then we also have the dropout rate for each of these subgroups. So, in looking at district level graduation dropout rates, there's a summary of the highest and lowest rates in the state. Again, statewide rate at eighty-four percent. Our lowest district graduation rate, we suppress at five percent, so we don't go anything below five percent on graduation rate. A hundred percent the highest. Dropout rates, again, we don't go any lower than ninety-five percent dropout rates. We suppress on that end. Lowest district dropout rate is zero percent, and statewide rate at ten point one. This table shows the distribution of districts within the various bands of graduation rate calculations. So, you see nineteen districts have a graduation rate higher than ninety percent. I should add districts in our schools. Some of these are special schools that don't fall necessarily within the district that we report as a district. So, this just shows that distribution. And then, the dropout rate distribution. So, our top ten districts with the highest graduation rates in the state have Mississippi School for Math and Science at a hundred percent, Mississippi School for the Arts at ninety-eight point five, going on down. Bottom rounding out the top ten rank, it's Holly Springs School District at ninety-one point eight percent. We have the top ten districts with the lowest dropout rates. So, Mississippi School for Math and Science, Mississippi School for Arts, zero percent dropout rate. If we had a tie at one of these, we just duplicated the rank entry, so you'll see two ones up there, two sevens, so on and so forth. Want to make sure that we give credit where credit is due here, make sure we point out all the high performers. And then, our lowest graduation rates, so the bottom ten districts with the lowest graduation rates. Again, we suppress on the bottom end. And then, bottom ten districts with the highest dropout rates. I have some notes in there just to say that any districts that have been dissolved due to consolidation, we're not including in the ranking. There's still some of those consolidations that we're still working through the four-year cohort calculation. So, that completes my presentation. I believe everybody's got a report of the individual districts. If you have any questions, be glad to help.
Questions? Great. That's great news, and let's all celebrate the fact that it's continuing to increase. I think, you know, you look back in 2014 and the percent increase, I mean, fantastic work. That's something that should be on top of everybody's talking points when you talk about the great things that are happening in our state. It's amazing. Great work.
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of it. Did we compare these to national averages? Do we know what the national average is for graduation dropout?
Yeah, so, in last year, we had an additional line in the table that I showed you on page six and seven of our presentation, kind of to show the national graduation rate and the national dropout rate. We had those numbers up through 2017. They didn't have updated numbers for this year, so we didn't put that in there since there wasn't new data to show you. But, the last reported graduation rate, the national average, was eighty-four percent.
Well, when you do get the national number for sure, we want to know, because that'd be a big day of celebration when we've met the national average. Yes, sir.
We have been asked about that, but currently in state statute, it requires that we calculate and report the four-year. And our approval-
I understand, the beds require the four-year cohort.
Quick question for me. A subgroup, did you know?
Well, no, I mean, you make a good point. We could have some trends.
Other questions or comments? Thank you all. We'll move on to item number three for action approval of Mississippi Department of Education contracts.
We have three items that we're seeking approval on for contracts. One, three A is our normal monthly state employees receiving retirement benefits. Then, we also have action item B, which is a contract with McKessey &amp; Brennan, which administers our MCAP system, which is our online grant system. And then, the third item is a contract with God South.
Okay? Yes, sir.
No, so, the Managed Service Provider Program is a program run through ITS, which is available to all agencies to find hard-to-fill IT positions or staff odd contract positions. So, the platform, the system, the vendor is all set up to help facilitate. That is a service to all agencies, and it's run through ITS.
It's a- Better, it's federal dollars. Yeah, fine.
Those contract workers will be employees of Mississippi Department of Education.
Before we move on to the number four, I'll need a motion under Chief Officer, excuse me, under the Office of Chief Operations Officer, do I have a motion to approve items three A, three B, and three C?
We're seeking approval on, and it is for the school nurse program, the Mary Kirkpatrick Castle.
Questions on this item? Okay. Hey, under the Office of Chief Operations Officer, do I have a motion to approve items four A?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those? Thank you. All right, for our next item, it's also Dr. Gavin, presentation of FY 2018 audit reports by CLA.
Yes, as you recall, a couple of years ago when I first started, we had some significant issues in the Office of Accounting and Reporting, but I think you will be pleased to hear the results from Clifton Larson of our FY 18 audit. So, with us today, we do have representatives from Clifton Larson. We have Mr. Bill Early and Eris Coleman here to present the audit.
Thank you, Dr. Gavin. Good afternoon, everyone. We have a, I think Eris is going to pull up a presentation. My name is Bill Early, I'm the principal from CLA, serving on the contract, and with me is Eris Coleman, a director with CLA. We put together a quick presentation for you all. I think it's on there.
Assist over here.
We can proceed without the, we have them printed out, so we can kind of proceed. I think it was email, but it might not have been uploaded fully, and we can get it out to everybody as needed. I will start by saying what Dr. Gavin alluded to is that we took over, this was our third year, performing the audit. We are technically contracted by you all and by the State Auditor's Office. I would say the first year we came, there were several material weaknesses that were identified. Since then, you'll be happy to know that we're going to present to you today that there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified during our audit of the selected funds. Dr. Gavin, the finance staff have worked diligently over the past several years to clean up the issues that were noted in the beginning, as well as the total one issue that was resolved over the year. So, with that said, there was two funds that go through those results that require communication to you all as the board will go through. Single audit, which is the audit of your federal program, have at that point, so. Eris, I'll go kind of turn it over to you as we get the presentation loaded up, but you can kind of go through the audit scope.
Thank you very much for allowing us to present today. I also echo Bill's sentiments is that, you know, three years ago when we did the audit, there's been a lot of improvement in us. Each year has gotten better and better, and I think I can definitely say this year was the best year. So, I'm going to go over the brief overview for the audit approach. Excuse me, I speak a little loud on my own. So, talk about the financial statements. So, we want to go over is CLA's scope for how we do the audit. First, we want to mention that the audit funds that were selected for audit was not based on our determination. As you know, MDE's financial information is part of the statewide CAFA, which is audited by the state auditors. As part of that process, the state auditors decide to divvy up and divide up certain departments, and they will contract out independent auditors like ourselves to assist them with this process. So, as such, the state auditors, we kind of take our directions from them as to what items they want us to audit, and then we audit them in accordance with auditing standards. So, that's how you got the funds selected that we did, which was the twenty-two, two-thirty fund, which is the MAEP fund, and then your federal grants fund, which is twenty-five, two oh one. Overall, CLA's statement can be done throughout the audit. You're not looking at, we don't do one hundred percent, we do sampling base, we do inquiry, we do tests of some controls, processes, but at the end of the day, it's not one hundred percent. We get reasonable assurance that everything's materially misstated. So, it's a risk-based approach. Where's the highest risk? That's where you spend most of your time. With your federal funds, of course, the highest risk there is that monies are being spent inappropriately. Next, after we do the risk-based approach and do our audit processes, we didn't give an opinion at the fund level. And what we're saying is, when we look at those individual funds that I mentioned, are they materially misstated or more reasonable within the accordance with generally accepted auditing principles? And for both funds, we gave an unmodified opinion. Unmodified is the highest level of assurance that an auditor is allowed to give. So, that means you did a great job. We can't give you anything better than that, so that means that we did not have to modify our opinion. The information was given and was presented to us in accordance with general accepted accounting standards. And then, another thing that we do, because you are a government, we are required to audit in accordance with GAAS. Thank you. I think we're right here. I think we're right here. Thank you. So I mentioned about the unmodified opinion, that's the highest quality of insurance that we are allowed to give. The next item was the item I was about to speak about is GAS. Governments are required the additional level of auditing standards, so you have generally accepted accounting principles, and then we have auditing standards which are for governments. And in that, we are required to look at the internal control structure around the financial statements. So the two funds that were audited, we did some internal control assessment and testing. And we do not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies related to either fund. And as Bill had mentioned, and even Dr. Gavin, when she was presenting us a couple of years ago, and even last year, this was a different story, but just with the efforts of the team and working and kind of revamping some of their processes and procedures, we have no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Next, I'm going to turn it over to Bill for some required communications with governance.
Yeah, I think you've covered this one, Eris. The financial statements, while we do present the audit and the opinion, they are based on the numbers and the information that are recorded by management throughout the year in the magic system. There are significant accounting policies that are disclosed in one of the financial statements that we issued. And again, the preparation does have some estimates and judgments that are made by management. We look at those for reasonableness and did not have any adjustments that we were required to make this year based on those judgments that were made by management. Other required communication we're required to make with you under auditing standards, there was no sensitive financial disclosures that we need to bring to your attention, there was no difficulties that were encountered during the audit. Again, in the past, there had been some delays that were incurred due to staffing that you all had. Those have been corrected, and we are moving forward to issue faster and faster every year. There was no correct and misstatements that were identified during the audit, and there was no disagreements that we had with management during our audit over any accounting policies or principles. Management was required to sign a representation letter to us telling us that they disclosed to us all information and that what they told us was truthful. In addition, there was consultations with other accountants, there were none that were indicated by management. This is known as opinion shopping or getting a different opinion from other accountants. We had known of those issues that were noted. There were no significant issues discussed with management prior to our retention as the auditors. Again, that process is done mostly by the State Auditor's Office now, as the law has changed for that. And in addition, there were no additional findings that were not previously discussed under our governance letter. The single audit, we are, again, I mentioned, we are in process for that. Eris and her team are currently working through Child Nutrition Cluster and the Child and Adult Food Program. At the end of that, we will issue our single audit, which will also come to you all. Should there be any findings, those will be noted in that report and can be discussed later. I think as Eris mentioned, the selection of the programs is done by the State Auditor's Office. They're required to do a single audit for the whole state, so the state auditor selects which major programs are to be tested each year. In the past, we've tested as many as, I believe, five for the Department of Education this year. They only required us to test two. With that said, anytime you have a major program that has what's known as a material weakness, it's required the next year to be high-risk and be audited. So the fact that you've gone from five down to two also shows you that you're making tremendous improvement in the grant compliance area. Each program selected for audit was tested with compliance for federal requirements, and Eris, if you want to elaborate, kind of what some of the testing is?
Sure. And we like to point out this, because as you know, USDE, as we mentioned throughout your meetings, and you have a lot of dealings with USDE, they may conduct various audits, you may get other program audits. When auditors such as ourselves are doing a federal compliance audit, it's in accordance with then if you're having an audit by USDE, if you're having some other type of program audit, if it's not in accordance with Uniform Guidance. So there on the screen is kind of the main requirements that are part of Uniform Guidance, but applicable to the programs tested for MDE, excuse me. Allowable costs and activities, basically how did you spend the monies? Were the money spent in accordance with the program requirements? Cash management, looks at your drawdown process, was that in accordance with federal compliance requirements? If you're required to match funds, maintain a certain level of effort, or earmark funds for a specific purpose, was that done, again, in accordance with federal compliance requirements? Period of performance, what we're looking for there is, did you spend the money during the time that the government said you could spend it? If a grant was to end as of 6/30/2018, and you spent funds in July, were you allowed to spend those funds? Reporting, kind of stuff evident, you know, did you report in accordance with granture requirements? And then with your special testing provisions, that's unique under each grant. With the two grants that we tested, the main ones there is the inventory system, and then they have a couple of them, but the main thing is looking at the inventory for the commodities.
And with that, that wraps up our presentation, so we'll open it up for any questions you all may have.
Questions or discussion from the board? Ms. Franklin?
That would not necessarily be a good assumption. Let's just say we have learned to work within the system.
Okay.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Gavin for turning everything around. It makes our job much easier that we've not had to face financial difficulties or missteps. And I just want to thank you for the board. In fact, I'm almost at the point I'd like to applaud you for getting everything straightened out.
Thank you. And I do have some members here from the team that I certainly didn't do this by myself, so I would like to recognize some of the staff that's here. I have Alicia Campbell here, Sheila Bowie, she's the new Director of Accounting, not so new anymore, and one of her team members, Mr. Neen Tate. So I do commend them for their hard work.
All done. That's right.
Other questions or comments, discussion? Okie doke. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Okay, we have amended agenda, item six, a general discussion on the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. Who do we have?
Well, Nathan is here, Wendy's here.
Well, y'all just stand by, we'll see where the conversation goes.
Yeah, Wendy's in the back. Wendy, Wendy.
I wanted to bring before the board, grateful to hear the conversations that we've had today around those two schools on the coast, but I'd also like to bring our two special schools, MSD and MSB, into that same conversation. And accommodations for those folks, either via law and/or whatever, and I'll make a motion in a minute, but I'd like to see us give consideration to our two state schools. And I'm going to make a comment. Last month, when those young men and their coaches and the staff and all came basis, those folks were challenged in ways that we can't even comprehend because we hadn't. But you take those young men, when they competed against other young folks who have the same challenges that they do, across this country, they were national champions in football. Now, we don't ask those young people to compete against the 1A, 2A, 3A, 4A, 5A, and 6A folks, you know? But when you gave them the right accommodations, look what those young men were able to accomplish, you know? So I'd like to see us think about how we can go about extending that same accommodation type thing, and not give those young people and the staff and the community out there else for those two schools.
Could it be added to the one that we already said we're going to send over to the legislative place?
Talking about two different kinds of populations of children, and I think that's important, because the child development centers were really designed for children that are SCD. And most of these children that are over there are very capable. They may be blind, and they may be deaf, but they are versus the child development center.
There is a process. If the bill, you know, moves forward against committee hearing, you can amend the bill in committee, but the bill's been dropped, the deadline was yesterday. So just to answer that question, if it does move forward, there is a path.
Way to amend. So I guess we would have to vote for that? For an amendment, if it becomes possible?
Just ask Pete, you know, yeah, I mean, I suppose we would make that, ask Pete to ensure that that gets heard if it becomes a bill debated in committee. But I think there's probably more discussion around the idea of including the blind and deaf school.
Pouring the bar for students. I generally believe that if you expect more, you get more. I don't want us to be in a position of expecting less if we know they are capable of doing more.
I'm agreeing with you, Dr. Kelly, but I'm saying, and in addition to, I don't think it would be motivating to those children to be treated differently than our others.
Would the next step be, if we go there, would the next step be making exceptions and lowering the bar for kids who are on some kind of state aid, for kids who come from certain communities and not others? I just don't want us to start lowering the bar for the sake of lowering the bar. I think that would be a disservice to those that we're trying to help and accommodate.
If we could come up with something from an accountability standpoint, so that we don't have to, I use the term way back, you know, hang that elf necklace around folks' neck. If we could, people like that, you know, if we could figure out some way to work with those folks and do this, that, and the other, you know, they're wonderful young people.
Their way, and I don't think there is, is there a way to measure them against children who fall in the deaf and blind from around the country? In other words-
And we've had these conversations, there are many districts around this nation that these children that are attending that school would be in regular high schools with an interpreter. Because they're capable. They're capable of sitting in a classroom and learning, and if you had an interpreter by their side to assist with them. And most districts that I've been familiar with don't house them all in one particular building. Typically, children that are housed in a residential placement like this are severely involved. They're not, and I don't, please don't take this as a dismissive, it's not their disability, it's just that they're not, they're not as involved as these children are in the child development. This just happens to be, and I've charged the superintendent, who's sitting there, and our department, with really looking around the nation to ensure, are we providing the best delivery system for these children? Because I think that they deserve the very best. And so, and that's not to say that they're not getting a good education, but superintendent and superintendent's been working on that too, to try and make sure that these kids have the ability to participate in clubs, and to participate, and obviously the athletic part of it, they've got taken care of. But all of the kinds of things that you picture a high school, I'm going to high school, but you've also got little ones down there, you've got a whole mess of little ones down there that are preschool and kindergarten age too. So, you know, we've been looking at, is this really the best delivery for all of these children? Or should most of these children, or many of these children, be back in their home school with an interpreter that can assist them in accessing general aid information?
I have had the privilege of two of those students that are at the, prior to them coming to kindergarten, they didn't know sign language. The children I had were deaf children. And we did not have the interpreters at our school, but they have been very, very successful in that school. I just, at open house this year, one of them came back because they have a younger sibling coming. And it was amazing, the things that she was able to show and demonstrate. She has had the opportunity to serve on homecoming court, she plays basketball, and she is extremely bright, and we knew that in kindergarten, but we did not have the resources to help her the way she needed to be helped at the time. But she is extremely bright, because the things I could teach her, she picked up like this as soon as they were put in her language.
Talked about looking at, like, regional kinds of resources, in other words, to put a group of resources around the state that, you know, that you could have accessed at that time.
For 15 years, and like I said, I've driven up and down I-55 since I was, you know, can remember, and have never stepped foot in that school, but watching those guys at the December meeting, it was like, you know, amazing to see their vitality and their, you know, and then I felt like an extreme guilt that when I realized we're in charge of the Mississippi School for Blind and Deaf. And then I also felt kind of, well, you know, let's get inspired and see if there's things that this board can do to be more supportive and to focus on those kids, because, you know, watch the CBS video I shared with a couple of you, of them going in and talking to the basketball coach and talking to the students, and, you know, it's just an amazing, you know, thing that exists there, and, you know, I would just urge folks to, you know, let's figure out how to roll up our sleeves and improve what their educational experience is, and whatever the accountability stuff that comes along with it, so be it. But man, what an opportunity for us to really impact, you know, what Ms. Rogers is doing and others. So other discussions on the topic? I won't make any comments on a state law to teach cursory writing, we'll just roll past that. Other comments? Okay, well, Ms. Franklin, I thought you said you might want to make a motion? Okay. So we'll make that an information, thank you for that. And there was no discussions on the consent agenda, so under the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve items A, B, and C? Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. So now we'll move into the consideration of executive session. We have a reader.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board to consider making a closed determination of the need to go into executive session.
Motion is your second.
Second.
Question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
During an executive session, we had a few items that we addressed approval of appointment of Education Bureau Director II to serve as security and privacy officer within the Office of Technology and Strategic Services. Approval of appointment of Ed Bureau Director II to serve as public relations director within the Office of Communication and Government Relations. Approval of appointment of Ed Bureau Director II to serve as director of educational literature for the Office of Teaching. From the state superintendent. Okay, so our last item, any report on meetings attended?
Any report.
Okay. Any requests for approval for meetings? Alright, so other business, the February board meeting will be held on February 21st, 2019 in Jackson, Mississippi at Central High Building starting at 10:00 a.m. Without hearing any other discussions, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Unanimous, so moved.
I won't take it personal.
Charles would be proud of this.
Yeah, he would, that's a record. All those in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Aye.